... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being televised by Chelmsford Media. Is anyone else present and plans to record? Welcome. Just so people know, we are reopening this session. We started off with an executive session on school security, and so now we're coming back to regular session and open session. So first order of business is consent agenda for our meeting of January 8th.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of January 8th.
Any discussions, any corrections? All in favor? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Four and one abstention. Alright, so moving on, next up is our Chelmsford High School student representatives.
At the high school semester two started today. On the February 25th and 26th, our Theater Guild's production of Our Time, Our Town will be shown in the PAC, and there will be an early release day on February 6th.
MCAS Bio Retest will be on the 6th and 7th, and there will be 8th grade parent night for the upcoming freshman class on February 7th in the PAC at 6:30. And congratulations to Matthew Waterman, who earned a 36 composite on his ACT. Two tenths of 1% earned a top score, and it is about 3,000 out of how many million?
A lot.
A couple million that earned this score. This is a very big achievement.
Any good news?
I have to be a little honest with you. I'm nervous with the microphones being this loud in my voice, so I'm going to try and regulate my voice today. So we have a few items for good news. So the buying school kicked off their reading rocks enrichment. It supports their winter reading challenge, so the kids are getting ready to read all their books and present to their peers what they're reading. We have three Parker teachers who have created a new program at Parker. It's called Parker Perks, and it was created by Deanna Weck, Christina Kirth, and Jenna Raffiello. And what they're doing is every other Friday, starting this, I know they start already, but this Friday they have one of them. They have a coffee hour from 8:30 to 9:30. And what this does is it provides an opportunity for students in specialized programs to gain those valuable skills of communication. So if you're available and you want to swing by, it starts this Friday and every other Friday from there. Chelmsford High School is the recipient of 10 Lenovo virtual reality headsets. It was a grant from Lenovo to be able to use these headsets in the school, so hopefully you'll be seeing those soon. And the new student help desk started today. Students are either participating in a course at Chelmsford High School, which is the Technology Troubleshooting and Repair Course, or they were a summer technician crew, and they had that experience, and they were chosen, they were able to take this course, and now they're working up to do some of the tech repair themselves. So that's great at Chelmsford High School. And then just up and coming, starting this week, we're going to be starting the orientation for our T teachers to come. I know we have Brian Atchison here to talk about his experience, which kind of started with the T program. That's our teaching excellence and achievement. That's where our international teachers are coming. So this Thursday is the kickoff introduction with them at UMass Lowell. So we're excited to have those teachers come with us.
How long are they here?
They're here for six weeks, and what happens is they kind of integrate into the schools, because they also do a lot of things around the area and in Boston. So it's a six-week program. Matthew and I will be there on Thursday to greet them.
Anybody else have any good news? Moving on, we're into public comment. If anybody would like to come up to speak to the committee about any of the items on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name and address for the recording secretary. Okay, alright, moving on to new business.
Thank you. Do you want to invite George and Terry? Okay, so we'd actually like to invite Mr. George Simonian and Terry, come on up from our Alumni Association. They're going to talk to us a little bit tonight about the Hall of Fame inductees for this year.
Yes, we are.
Welcome, you guys.
More good news. The Chelmsford High School Alumni Association proudly announces its 29th Annual Hall of Fame Induction. The ceremony will take place on the evening of the 23rd of March 2019 at the University of Massachusetts Lowell Conference Center in Lowell. The program will include a social at 5:45, dinner at 6:30, and the induction takes place at 7:00. Those being inducted are as follows: Gail Mullin Bowden, class of 1979; Lauren H. Cochran, teacher; Mara Devaney Dua Asamoah, class of 1988; William Gillette Jr., class of 1989; Patricia Galvin McCafferty, class of 1976; Peter J. McHugh, class of 1964; Judy Merrill Metz, class of 1973; Michael G. O'Keefe, class of 1987; Louise Quinn Tremblay, class of 1962. The Alumni Association will also present its Lucy E. Simonian Golden Lion Award, which is given to an organization or an individual who has been an extraordinary supporter of the students of Chelmsford High School over the years. This year, the recipient will be Evelyn S. Thorne, and a presentation will be made at the induction ceremony. For information relative to the purchase of tickets for the induction ceremony, you can either call Terry at (978) 251-3788, or myself at (978) 256-3100.
I just happened to be at Evelyn's house when I brought her mail in, because she is, can't get around, and she opened up your letter.
Good.
She was very, very excited. She was very, very excited. She's done an awful lot for our schools.
Very worthy.
And where is it being held again this year?
Where?
UMass Center Conference.
Same as last year. It went very well last year.
We were very pleased.
Yeah, and they want us back. And we want to go back. No, it worked out very well. They really treated us nicely. A little different than alumni.
Behave yourself.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it sounds like a great, no, it sounds like a great class.
Another great group, okay?
Tickets are $60?
$60. Yep, I have them. Take it now? We'll take your names. But anyway, you'll all be there, I know that, okay? But it's another great group, and I, the committee meets at my house, and I listen to them, okay? I'm part of the committee, but the caliber of people that will get nominated, it's just, in fact, early in the discussions, I said to the committee, I said, "Look, why don't we induct all 19 and just get it over with, okay, and start fresh next year?" Okay, because it's hard to choose from the people who get nominated. It's just unbelievable what some of our grads are doing.
George, how many people overall are in the Hall of Fame at this point?
Okay, multiply nine by, what did I say, 28?
29.
29?
Good math teacher back there.
It's just great. And the nicest thing about this is, you know, it's all encompassing, okay? Because I can remember back when I was the principal, okay, we wanted to get a Hall of Fame going, and I had some problems with it, because most Hall of Famers are athletic. And I wouldn't entertain that, okay? I wanted this kind of a Hall of Fame. Of course, it never happened. So as soon as we started the Alumni Association, bang, we started that, well, actually, the second year was our first group. And it's all inclusive. Even though we, great athletes, we had, I mean, we, an Olympian that performed in two Olympics, a Sandy Cup winner with three Sandy Cup rings. I mean, so we do have athletes, okay? But, there's one right here, okay, a state champion wrestler, okay? But, so it's all encompassing, which is nice.
I was just going to say, this might be a good time to remind people that you can nominate people. A lot of times, we get conversations that, you know, so-and-so ought to be in the Alumni Hall of Fame, but it helps a lot if somebody nominates.
Well, this happened a couple of years ago, at the 4th of July. A man came up to me at the booth, and he said, "Why don't you be able to induct my sister?" Well, who's your sister, okay? Well, he gave her a married name. It didn't ring any bells. Then he told her the maiden name. "Oh, wow, what is she doing?" He says, "Well, nominate her." And of course, that year, she went right in, because it's unbelievable what she's been doing, okay? Again, thanks, Al, that's, we won't know unless somebody comes and tells us and nominates a person, okay?
And to reduce the burden, we have created a committee to help people with the nomination process, because it can be a little daunting, and I think that in past years has held people back from making somebody a nominee. Now with this committee, they'll work with the individual and help them with the nominating process, so that where the candidates can come in. And we get a lot of them.
And what happens with that, with that, where that's working, is that the, most of the nominations are about equal. In other words, the work that's done, the presentations are about equal. And of course, you know, we don't get one with, you know, 30 pages of recommendations and one which is one page, okay? They're all, you know, the kind of level of playing field, so that the people who are being nominated, they all get why they're being nominated.
I want to point out too, just besides the Hall of Fame, you know, the Alumni Association does a lot in terms of scholarships and everything else, I mean...
Oh, will we be back to talk about our scholarship awards?
I'll be back. By the way, we're up to 132 scholarships.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for having us. See you there, 23rd of March.
Thank you.
I'll be there. Alright, our second presentation of the evening, this is our spotlight on mathematics, and didn't even invite him up, but he's already moving. Dr. Matthew Berenavant, and he has some staff with him tonight that I'll allow him to introduce. Take your time and get set up. But again, this is just going to continue with our agenda, where each school committee meeting, we either have a school come and present on what they're doing, or a department talk about some of the work that they're doing in the school system. So we're excited to hear tonight about mathematics, and happy to have you guys come. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Lang. I did get the head nod from Dr. Hirsch, so I was ready to come up. So tonight, we're going to spend some time and discuss the mathematics. Thank you, Dr. Hirsch, Dr. Lang, and members of the school committee for inviting us to come here and present. I'd like to first begin by sharing a little bit of an introduction as to who we are. I am the Mathematics Department Coordinator, K-12 for the school district. This here is Dan Williams. He's a Chelmsford High School mathematics teacher. Next is Amanda, excuse me, Donna Foley, who's the middle school math coach within the district. Amanda Noble, 7th grade Parker teacher for mathematics. And then our elementary math coach, Anne Swisben. And so we've come before you in previous years to give presentations, and what we tried to do this evening is to not necessarily rehash the same things over and over again. Instead, what we're planning on doing tonight is kind of sharing some updates as to things that's been happening in the last couple of years. Spend some time talking about the mathematics philosophy for education, and then also talking about some hot button issues that might be coming up or have come up within our department, so you are made aware, as well as the people who are listening this evening, to this video as to what's happening within our department. So the first thing I want to share is the philosophy K-12 of the mathematics department. And there are three areas in particular. The first is that we really believe in the idea of conceptual understanding. We want to promote the idea of having students learning how to solve problems more than one way. As we heard in a question this evening, where there's a quick math question given to all of us, 29 times 9 to try to figure out how many people are inducted in the Hall of Fame, there's more than one way to do that. One of us, we just briefly talked about it, said, "Let's do 30 times 9 and then subtract 9." You could do 29 times 10 and then subtract 29 from it. You could break it up a variety of different ways. And our mathematics curriculum and instruction really tries to promote solving problems more than one way, because if you do that, you really build on conceptual understanding, as opposed to just trying to memorize something. Memorizing negative b plus or minus the square root of b squared minus 4ac all over 2a really doesn't help our students. We want them to know and understand the quadratic formula. The second thing is we really want to try to promote joyful mathematics within the district and within our classrooms. Within the STEM field, the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, three out of those four, we often see, not necessarily in Chelmsford, but as a United States of America, those areas, students really enjoy learning them. And then you have the ugly stepsister of mathematics. And so what we want to do is really promote joyful learning, where the experiences and activities that students receive make them want to learn the mathematics, as opposed to just being forced to do that. So that's our K-12 philosophy as well. And finally, the idea of growth mindset. And Amanda Noble, 7th grade Parker teacher, will be spending some time talking to you this evening about growth mindset and what we are doing within this school district for students and our teachers to really promote growth mindset as part, as our learning experience in the classroom. So I'll now turn it over to Dan Williams, high school math teacher, who will share a little bit about what exactly we are doing at the high school level.
Thank you. So my name is Dan Williams. I'm a mathematics teacher at the high school. I currently teach geometry and trigonometry. We have 18 teachers in the high school math department, and we haven't, we've had the same teachers here for four years. We haven't had any change. So we have a great crew and really all get along very well. First off, the picture on the left is our high school mathematics scope and sequence. It shows all different courses we have and all different paths. There's a lot of options for our students to go through, whether you want to take AP classes. We have AP Calc, AB, Calc BC, Intro to Stats. We have two AP computer science courses, all the way through college prep or remedial math. We have something for everybody, and we really can suit all their needs. One of the courses that we just added in this year is called Quantitative Reasoning. It's taught by two of our teachers, Zach McIntyre and Matt Witty. It's a two separate semesters course. So one semester, you have Zach McIntyre, one semester you have Matt Witty. And it's really interesting, because it's a little bit more real-life mathematics, and it's something kids have really enjoyed so far. The part that Zach teaches focuses on stocks, car interest rates, inflation, personal finance, and budget. And the part that Matt teaches is about being like a realtor, and you're researching home market data analysis to make conjectures for logical progression of market trends, calculate mortgage rates and loans, calculate commission percentages, taxes and proportion, escrow, closing costs, down payment, and residency budget. So it's been a really nice addition to our scope and sequence. You can see up there our new textbooks and curriculum for math courses. Our core classes in general have all gone over the Big Ideas Math, which is in line with our middle schools. And it's really helped put us working through nicely and not rehashing the same material or teaching it different ways. It's made us, as a department, much more streamlined and efficient. And then even courses that didn't go to Big Ideas, we've reworked the curriculum and made it all fit in nicely. And we also always are encouraging new technology in the classrooms. Over the years, we've invested in TI-inspired calculators. We use different websites, such as one is ixl.com, which is great for skill-based practice. Another one is noree.com, which you could almost, it's like, a bit like Khan Academy, but you can make it more how you want it to be. Put in exact videos, create the class that you want to be. Many people are using Eno boards or Apple TV, integrating Google Classroom into our classroom as well. There is a new club this year called the CHS TED Ed Club, and this club, although not limited to mathematics, there's a new club at the high school run by Matthew, in which students are working to give their own TED Talk at the high school this spring. So a really exciting club. We also have a math team that is coached by one of our teachers, Katherine Delamas. We have 20 members in the club. Every week, they have a practice, and they work on problems and concepts for these math competitions they compete in. They compete in the Greater Boston Math League and the New England Math League. There's one event each month that they compete in. And throughout this year, we have come in second place in each Greater Boston Math League event so far. So doing really well this year. And lastly, we're preparing for the new MCAS. It's going to be the first year that the high school takes part in the new MCAS. The curriculum has changed a little bit for it. It's all based on computers. So going to things like those ixl and noree that I mentioned before has helped prepare our students to be prepared for this MCAS, and just reworking our curriculums to meet all the new needs for the MCAS versus the previous ones that we've done before. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Donna Foley. I'm the middle school math coach, for those of you who don't know me. I've been with Chelmsford Public Schools now for 45 years, and it's a great length of time. It's a wonderful, wonderful job. I've been a math teacher at the middle school and high school, math coordinator, and now working as a role of math coach, a very exciting role. As all of you know, in 45 years, mathematics has transitioned from just doing arithmetic to teaching mathematics. Teachers, our marvelous middle school teachers, have transitioned with us. Many of them have gone to multiple workshops and take lots and lots of different math classes to move along with the curriculum. As Dan stated, we use the Big Ideas Math, starting in grade 6. It dovetails into math expressions, which Anne will talk about in a little while. And it's very nice that the Big Ideas Math carries from 6th grade through the high school. The technologies that we're using, basically, there are three. We use bigideasmath.com, which a lot of the students do homework, quizzes and tests. We can do that online. When the students do their homework online, the teachers actually get the results that morning when they go in, and so they're not spending a lot of time going over homework questions that everybody got correct, yet instead, they can dedicate their time to the ones the students had difficulty with. We also use ixl, which Dan mentioned. ixl is a skill-based, rather than problem-solving, I would say it's more skill-based for students that need work with skill. And then we also use iReady, the iReady program that we're using for both math and ELA, which is a diagnostic program, and also prescriptive, which our students go into, and it can set the stages for them. So again, great technology. The teachers have had to learn the technology. We've learned the technology, and the students are probably better at it than we are. Like in the high school, they participate in math clubs, the math team, where only 20 students participate in that. In the middle school, we have all students participate in two different math contests. We have them participate in Continental Math, which is five questions, once a month, that runs between November and March. I've put a couple sample questions up there for you for grades 6 to 8, when people at home want to try these. If you don't get the answers, just give us a call, and we'll make sure that we give you the correct solution. These are challenging questions for students, so it's not a time-reference thing, because they have 30 minutes to try six questions. They're all different, unique problem-solving questions, where students will have an opportunity to try things, as Matthew mentioned, in many different ways. There are multiple ways for students to get the answers. We like to use these with the students afterwards to see how they got the solutions to the questions, and go over the variety of, the variety of learning styles. The next, the next is the New England Math League. Again, all of our students participate. This is a little bit different, because the students have 35 questions to do in 30 minutes. There's lots of little tricks in these questions. Students are allowed to use a calculator here, but the calculator isn't always the best or the most efficient way to solve a problem. So what we'll find out, as from these students, we use both of these contests for students to help us with placement, because they each give us a different, a different view. Our 6th grade level for placements, the 6th are heterogeneously grouped with support classes and also co-talk classes. 7th grade, we have honors accelerated grade level, and then we have supported and co-talk classes. In 8th grade, we have the honors accelerated, the grade level, and supported and co-talk. We keep spreadsheets with all of the data on all of the students to try to make the best decision as to where we're going to place students, so that they are challenged but not overwhelmed. We take a lot of time going through this and the teachers' recommendations. Then we have our new ways of teaching math, which now, we're going to pass this over to Amanda, and she's going to help us with kind of explaining what we're talking about with growth mindset.
So my name is Amanda Noble. I teach 7th grade at Parker, and I'm going to briefly talk about growth mindset and what we, as a department, are really looking into and have been doing. So growth mindset for us is not just one of those buzzwords that we're just going to throw around, and next year will be something else. We've kind of been working with this idea for a few years now, and we're really actively participating with the students and with our colleagues. Growth mindset is the thought that your ability in something can grow, can change over time, where the fixed mindset is you're born with these abilities and that's it. And that looks like in the math classroom, is we see students that will come to us and say, "I've never been good at math, so my parents haven't been good at math, so that's it. I'm not going to be good at math." When we're trying to show these students that your experience in the past is not necessarily your experience in the future, and we've really been trying to show that in the classroom. So there's people, Carol Weck, studies have shown that with this growth mindset and your thought process and your effort and perseverance, it's not just, "Oh, change my mindset, and I'm going to get better grades." No, you have to put in the work, you have to put in the effort and the motivation, and you'll see higher achievement. In the classroom, creating stations, having math be engaging, and not just teacher standing in front of the room worksheets, like we think of math. More engaging, stations allow for different activities for one standard, so that students can move around, they can try something, and if they don't like this way, they can try a different way and build that confidence up. It also allows the teacher to be part of the classroom and have that small group, give the immediate feedback to students as they're working, really be the facilitator, not necessarily the person in charge. Other things that we're doing are test retakes, you know, for growth mindset. We don't want to stop the learning. We want them to, you know, if they're getting a bad score and they see that on, we don't want it to stop. We want them to have to work at it, work at trying to do that over again. You know, that immediate feedback, and not just on tests, but if they did a problem and you're walking, and the teacher's walking around checking that off, giving them that confidence right then and there. Informal assessments, often, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, and, like I said, engaging lessons. We had a professional development two weeks ago now, with math and science in the middle school, to Anne? Was it high school too?
High school too.
Yeah, middle school and high school. Really having those, what types of things can we do to engage the students? That's not just centers, but just, you need to assess, we need to do those things. How can we engage the students that way? And we're having those actual discussions with these kids. What does a growth mindset look like? Do you have a growth mindset? Are you stuck in thinking that you can't do better in math? So these are all things that we are doing.
And my name is Anne Swisben, and I'm the K-5 math coach. And I, like Dawn, I have taught math in Chelmsford for many years. And I'd want to talk a little bit today, this evening, about the K-5 math curriculum, which is math expressions, where we adopted the 2018 edition this year. And unlike some programs that are out there that come out with a new edition, they might change the cover a little bit. They actually, the Houghton Mifflin-Harkort, who is the publisher, actually sat down with teachers and got feedback from teachers all over the districts that they work with, to find, to look at the program and say, "What could be improved?" It would still, it still works with the Common Core standards and the Massachusetts, 2017 Massachusetts math frameworks. It still works with the standards for mathematical practice. It has all those wonderful things that everyone here just mentioned about using multiple strategies and representations, children talking about the math process, talking about the problem solving with the teacher and with their peers. There's a lot of problem solving. It's not just arithmetic anymore. It's problem solving. It's flexible thinking. It's how do you represent an answer with a mathematical model, be it a picture or an equation. There's a technology involved that was updated. There's fluency practice that students can go to during, in school, in the computer lab, or at home. There's parent letters that get sent home, or the parents can also access them online to find out what are the students learning in this particular unit, because often, what a parent will say, "Well, that was not how I learned it. That's not how I learned subtraction. I learned it with borrowing." And we don't talk about that anymore. We talk about the conceptual understanding, which was something that Matthew mentioned early on. So there's that support for the parents as well. In addition, we had a very nice summer initiative this past summer with the K-4 teachers, and it resulted in documents called, a document called ECOS, the Elementary Course of Study. And what we tried to do was look at integrating reading lessons, writing lessons, math lessons, science lessons, and social studies lessons. Again, everything's in separate little boxes, and we wanted the kids to look at the, be able to look at the big picture. And they're not going to see the big picture unless we present it to them that way. And especially the math and science, there's a lot of crossover there. And so we looked at the first science kit that each grade level was going to do, and we picked out activities that could also apply... do, and we picked out, uh, activities that could also apply in mathematics, be it graphing or, uh, making predictions, or, um, uh, trying to, uh, write an explanation to, to something, uh, in, in, in math and in science. Uh, and then that led us to looking at some other kinds of problems, some practical problems that really engage the kids, that's not just, uh, a worksheet with twenty or twenty-five problems, uh, to get the quote, "right" answer. Um, so for example, um, if you just look at the picture there on the right-hand side, we have some kiddos, uh, on the right, and they, we, one of the little problems we posed with a group of children in fourth grade was to take, to predict, uh, how many reams of paper it would take to go from the floor to the ceiling without actually stacking it up. And that was the question, and it was very open-ended. And we grouped the kids, uh, in pairs, and we gave them different kinds of measuring devices, uh, we asked them to predict, uh, and then to let them come up with the answers. And they, they spent forty-five minutes, so engaged in this problem. And they made prediction, great predictions, and they used, um, they used their measuring devices. Every, so ECOSS is the beginning of that. We did that this past summer, thanks to, uh, Dr. Hirsch and, uh, yeah. And, um, and we're going to, hopefully continue and add more, more, um, problems to, or more kinds of situations to that, to that folder. So teachers have a variety of things to use, uh, to engage the students. Okay, so then, um, going back to our math expressions program, um, there is a technology component, it's called Think Central, and the site is bookmarked on the homepage of each school, um, by him and, uh, center, Harrington and South Row. And, um, I have been in, I've gone into the classrooms to help the teachers show the kids how to get on the program, and then we made handouts for the kids to take home to their parents so that they can get on and they can do, use what's called the personal math trainer, which is a, a new part of that program for, um, math expressions. And they can do fluency practice and practice ta- taking tests online. And of course, that's very, very important for our third and fourth graders because that's how they take their MCAS. So they need to know how to, how to take that test online. Um, and then, um, we also have intervention. There's level one intervention in the classroom in small group settings. And the, again, math expression supports that with a variety of, um, activities that the teacher has access to through Think Central. We also have Title One Math Interventionists, which are, are, um, have been hired and work in the different elementary schools, and they pull small groups of students based on feedback and data they get from the teachers, uh, through their formative and summative assessments, so that, um, those kiddos that might need just a little bit more help are, are getting it. Uh, and then we also, I also, um, work with the teachers to find challenging activities and puzzles and games, uh, for deep understanding of math concepts, as well as the joy of math, to have fun with math. Uh, and then the instructional support, um, we had developed the pacing guides for math expressions, and as I said, the integration of math topics with reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. We use the iReady for the benchmark testing and the four, and then the teachers have formative and summative assessments as part of the math expressions program. And then periodically, we have team meetings, uh, in, in the different grade levels to discuss, uh, and generate ideas to develop new ways of teaching a topic, uh, and then again, to help kids with intervention or to challenge kids. And then one other thing that grew out of the summer ECOSS was, um, in grade four, eleven out of the seventeen fourth grade teachers, uh, wanted to continue the process of meeting throughout the school year. And so once a month, I have been meeting with them, we have a little, a PLC going, and, um, we talk about how, how did those lessons go? What can we do? Did they, anybody find anything that was really whiz-bang and great and that we can share with everybody else? So that's a state of elementary math. Thank you for listening.
Any, any questions from, uh, committee or have anything?
I was just gonna say, pretty, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. I'm pretty sure my daughter's like three years away from being better at math than I am, so.
And for the, and for the record, how old is she?
Uh, she's, uh, she's gonna be going into fourth grade, so she's in third grade.
Okay. All right. I do appreciate you didn't make us solve any of those problems, 'cause I.
Yeah.
I figured out the ruler one, but.
We find, we find you'd be a very friendly group. If it was a little hostile, we would say, take out your pencils and paper and sulfur.
A bit of a meeting then.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, it was great, you know?
Need a more of a growth mindset.
Thank you, everyone. It's the evening of presentations. So next presentation this evening, I'd like to invite in Brian, um, Atchison, who's a teacher at the high school. Um, I'm gonna help you get your PowerPoint, um, up and going. But, uh, Brian, if you recall back a few meetings, Linda Tanini had come to present, um, as part of her experience last summer with the program that she was involved with. Uh, Brian was, um, with Linda in the same program, he'll, he'll get into it a little bit. Uh, he wasn't able to join us that evening, but he was able to accommodate us tonight. Um, so we wanted to be able to have him in and to hear about your experience because it's really, I think, cool and exciting, particularly with the T-teachers coming as well, kind of gives a different perspective. So I don't want to, uh, take away your presentation. I'm gonna get your PowerPoint up right here for you. But, uh, welcome you this evening to, to share your thoughts with the school committee.
Namaste, and thank you for letting me come, and good evening, and I'll wait till he gets the presentation up.
Yep, I'm getting you there.
Oh, 'cause I don't remember what I put in it. There you go. Great. Uh, as Dr. Lang said, I'm Brian Atchison, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about, uh, my experience with the Teachers for Global Classroom, uh, which is an international field experience, uh, that has made me a better teacher. And I, I wanna share that, how it's made me a better teacher and some of the experiences I had that put, put it that way. And I'm also gonna highlight a little bit about the Teachers for Teacher Achievement and Excellence Program, uh, that will be joining us in the very near future. So, the programs are offered and presented by the United States Department of State and a group called IRX, which helps manage the programs. Um, and it leads towards a mutual understanding, it, it provides with, um, an opportunity for international education, and, uh, a, a way for us to kind of clear out those international borders when it comes to education and open it up for dialogue amongst teachers of different countries, uh, to kind of build a better community, uh, focusing on things such as global issues and education issues. Um, so as you can see from the slides, some of the programs are there on the right. Um, uh, in the coming years, it's going to be a Fulbright Scholarship Program. Uh, so that's a pretty distinguished, uh, scholarship program, so it's pretty exciting. A little bit about the programs, uh, they focus on bringing teachers together and training them in ways of, uh, opening, like I said, opening up the borders, uh, training teachers to think beyond just their classroom, beyond just their school, beyond their community, and thinking in a global manner, and helping that progress from the teachers down to the students and give them the opportunity to start thinking that, hey, the little things I can do here might make a difference somewhere else in the world. And, uh.
I'll go back, I'm sorry.
That's right. Um, and through, through that training, it leads towards further opportunities, uh, and it, uh, awarded some of us the opportunity to travel to different countries, to actually interact and work with teachers. And I had the, the blessings of going over to India. And part of this is a way to increase diplomacy as well and break down some of the barriers uh, between different countries. The countries we traveled to were not necessarily known as the first-class countries in education. We weren't traveling to Finland. We were traveling to areas like, I went to India, and people went to Morocco, and, uh, Linda Tanini went to Indonesia. So there were a variety of countries that are not necessarily known for their education, and the goal is to bring those countries together with us and start to make it a global, uh, education rather than per country. Thank you, Dr. Lang. So, uh, real quick about the program, and it kind of, very similar between, uh, the TEA program and the TGC program. TGC program, we started off with, uh, online curriculum. We took, uh, what was, uh, cool, went to eight college credits worth of, uh, material, and, uh, it was a pretty intense program, giving us techniques for use in the classroom as well as kind of changing our mindsets. And from there, we had a symposium last February where we got together with all the different people traveling, uh, regardless which country they were going to. Uh, that's when I got to meet my cohort members that were traveling to India. And in July, I had, uh, hopped on a plane and spent, uh, nearly three weeks in the country of India, which was amazing. And once all of that was completed, I came back and we, uh, while we, I, created a international education guide, uh, that I, I'm, you'll see my website later to share it. So both of them, again, focused on providing workshops to help teachers get better and to get a better understanding of this international culture. Um, and while both, while in the country of India and while the TEA fellows will be here, there'll be workshops, or I went through workshops, learning about the Indian culture, learning about the Indian education system. I did some cultural excursions, visiting places like the Taj Mahal, and I'm gonna show some pictures in a moment. And then getting field experience, I spent some time, um, a whole week working with one teacher in their particular school and really getting an understanding of how their education system works. Uh, so of, I went to India. Uh, my first part of the trip, I spent in Delhi, um, that is the capital of India. Uh, it's a big bustling city, and, uh, I got to meet some very influential education leaders, uh, including the National Director of Education, and had a amazing lunch with him. And we talked about, uh, different philosophies that the different countries have in education. Uh, and we visited some of the schools there in the city. After that, I traveled to Cozicote, um, uh, to, which is in the state of Kerala, where I spent a week with a host teacher. Uh, he was amazing. He actually came to UMass Lowell, uh, three years ago, two years ago. Two years ago, and he did his TEA, uh, experience here. He was in Tewksbury, but we won't hold that against him. Um, and then from there, uh, we traveled to Agro, which is, uh, famous for the Taj Mahal. Uh, we did a wrap-up of our experiences, trying to bring what is a very powerful experience together, um, and begin work on our, um, moving back to our coun- our own country. Uh, one thing that drives home, uh, my experience in India is this phrase, "Atity diva bava", which means guest is God. And while I was there, they made me feel that way. Um, at no point did I ever feel like I was anything less than the most amazing person in the world. So, Dr. Lang, if you, so, uh, going there, when I visited Delhi, uh, it's a amazing city. Uh, we got to visit some of the schools. The, the picture on the left is my cohort of friends, uh, lifelong friends now, um, that I got to experience it with. Uh, the guy in the front is one of our hosts, Rajesh. And they took us through the city, we got to see the good, the bad of Delhi, and there's a, a lot of both. Um, they took us outside of the city to a little village, which, um, if, it's, it was amazing, this little village, and it's a picture of it on the bottom right. It's okay. And we got to experience a lot of the culture, but once we walked in that little village, which maybe had a population of about fifty, uh, they swarmed us for the entire time we were there, and every, everything they could show us, they tried to. Uh, we get to, they, they put us on an ox cart and dragged us through the city and celebrating and singing the entire way. It was, it was like a mini parade, uh, which was awesome. Um, after, um, that little village visit, we also got to visit some of the schools. We got to see some of the best and brightest students, uh, India had to offer in some of their, uh, those schools, as you can see their amazing yoga talent in the right. Um, there's the, uh, district, uh, not district, the Director of Education for the Nation there, talking to the teachers and the students. He was amazing. He, he fielded some challenging questions that the teachers had about, uh, classroom choice and those type of things, and he took it all and he went with it, and, um, it was, it was really amazing to see. Uh, the schools are very different than what we have here. Everything's, there's, it's, I would describe it like you would think a California school, no hallways, everything's kind of outdoors, there's no doors on the classrooms. The, the education style is very different as well. It's a lot more, what are you gonna do to get me to pass this test? And it's not teaching the, the student the whole meaning of being a human. It's, if you wanna get a better life, you have to pass the test, memorize everything I tell you, which is unfortunate, and they are trying to make changes to it. And I think that's where this relationship that I'm, that I've built with my fellow teachers is coming along. And, but it's a, it's, it's countrywide, and so it's gonna take a while. So, um, visited those schools in Delhi, um, high schools, elementaries, they were, they were all amazing. The kids put on amazing performances every time we walked in, and they always fed us. Food everywhere we went, there's meals. Some of the cultural places in Delhi, I got to see Red Fort, which was a, um, a monstrous fort that, uh, from the fourteens, fifteen hundreds, all the way up to the seventeen hundreds, it was an active fort. Got to see some of their, uh, religious places like, uh, Extradom, which is the bottom left, and some of their amazing, uh, beautiful images the kids would create. That, that's all made with, uh, the, uh, flower petals, that picture in the middle. And they would do that on the front hallway as you walk into the school, for every school that we went into. It may have been just for us, I don't know if it's there every day, but they, they're gorgeous, and everyone's a little different. Um, but there's also the unfortunate part that not everybody is economically advantaged. The upper right, tho- those are houses that you see there behind that pipe. They're basically whatever pieces of scrap they can find to build a house, and they just create these vast areas that are just cardboard and tarps and metal bits that they use to make houses. And it's unfortunate that a lot of those kids end up, um, in unfortunate situations. Uh, we actually, by accident, but it actually worked out nicely, ended up seeing a, a youth prison, um, and got to see some of these kids that, because they have no opportunity to get to go to school and get everything that, um, we have the luxury of he- here in the U.S., these kids are ending in life of crime at the age of six. So, it's, it was a little tragic, um, but it was, it was eye-opening in many different Uh, traveling down to Kotoko, as, as it's pronounced there, um, I, walking into the school, they had an amazing presentation for us. Every school, regardless where we went, had an amazing presentation, uh, students performing, uh, their traditional dances and songs, and, um, we got an opportunity, remember in Kotoko, to talk and actually teach some of these students, uh, which was really cool. Some of them had not seen, uh, the, or will probably never see an American again. And, uh, getting to, they, they swarm you, it's like locusts on honey. They just come after you, and they just wanna talk with you and meet you, and, uh, every opportunity they go to is taking selfies. So I got, I'm now the selfie king. Nice long arms, it helps.
They made you a sign.
Yeah, they made us banner, there's, there's probably about twenty of those plastered around the school.
Wow, that's cool.
Just a warning, I'm planning on trying to get one printed for when our guests come in to the TEA. Uh, this has inspired me, we're gonna, I'm gonna mention some things later. Um, but we got to teach, uh, different classes, I could see, um, some tenth graders, eleventh graders, and twelfth graders, and, uh, this is a very important time in their life. This is where they decide if they're going to go down to college. They have to take an exam at the end of their eleventh grade, at the end of their twelfth grade. If they fail the exam, they're not going to college. Sort of like our SATs and ACTs, but this, yeah, you can't retake it, and failing is anything lower than a ninety-eight percent.
Wow.
So, that's because all, it's so competitive to get into these schools that the, the, there's kids have no choice but to be perfect. And, uh, amazing kids. Uh, and unfortunately, many of them are also weeded out before they get to eleventh and twelfth, 'cause they just won't be able to hack it in the class. And we actually had, um, we got to see some other political things. There was a political issue where the students actually went on protest. High school students went on protest, and bottom right picture, and some of them are standing there yelling and screaming, and, uh, they're very peaceful about it, but they're very loud, um, and interrupting classes of those that were still trying to learn. And, uh, the. And a picture of the school we, we were at is there on the bottom left. The yellow building is actually the high school and the white building is the construction of a college. So, it rains a lot, a lot. If you weren't paying attention to the news, they had the worst monsoons they've had in years. And it gets very wet. So, everything washes away. As I was there, I also got to visit some historical and cultural sites. The Western Ghaut Mountains is a beautiful lush mountain range. I don't know how to describe it. It's so amazing. The mountains just climb really quickly and go up easily four, five thousand feet real quick. And everything's covered in a lush jungle. Get to see the Indian Ocean. The upper right hand corner, got to see the Etikal caves, which are six thousand year old cave drawings or carvings. That is a sun god king in that picture, if you can make it out. And got to see some fun wildlife. We went through a tiger reserve, didn't get to see a good tiger, but we got to see the elephants and their wild habitat and boars. And lots and lots and lots of deer and so, it was an amazing trip. Coming back to Agro, we, we learned more cultural experiences beyond that. We got to see some traditional, what's called a raga, which is kind of like an Indian opera. It goes on for several, it took about two hours before they were finally done, the first song. They fed us the entire time. It was a lot of fun. Did some shopping and of course, we saw the Taj Mahal, which is amazing. You should all go. So, what, some of the things we learned is there's a lot of similarities, but there are some differences. We all have to meet high demands of education as determined by government. And I think we do a great job here in the US of not only following the curriculum as stated. But meeting those other things that aren't necessarily written down, like how to be a good person and how to interact with others. And I, I think that's something that all teachers desire to do, but in India, they seemed a little bit more handcuffed to the curriculum. To the point where I attended a PTO meeting and some of the parents got mad that the other partner teacher and I were there. Because the kids weren't learning what was line two of the syllabus on that day. And said, we don't want these teachers here. And so, the principal said, we're having them anyways. So, it's nice to have that support there. So balancing the demand of the needs of the students and, and real life is a challenge regardless where we go. And having the resources necessary. Chompsut is amazing. I am so grateful that I teach here. The classroom I visited had a blackboard and just rows of benches. And no lights. They had just received a grant that they were installing projector, overhead projectors, but there's no computers for the projectors. So, they are very limited on their resources. And I'm very grateful for everything I have in my classroom, teaching biotechnology. There's thousands of dollars worth of equipment through grants and et cetera. But having that opportunity to teach these students, I'm very appreciative of what we have in Chompsut. All teachers have a passion and it, it was very evident that these teachers cared about their students. They'd do lunch with them to kind of catch up and make sure they're doing well and eating well at times. And it, it's, it's an appreciation for our students. I think that's really what drives teachers. And another big thing I learned is the culture. In India, the culture is, this is business, get it done. Here in Chompsut, we have so much we offer the students and the culture here is amazing. Whether it's our activities and our sports and I can't, it, it gave me a huge appreciation going over there for what we have here in Chompsut. So, it, it's, I, I thank you for that. So, my big takeaway, I had to create a, a final conclusion on this. And my question going in is what does, what effect does culture have on science and education? And I walked in going, how does religion have effect? How does the, the social stigmas of, they, while they technically don't have the caste system there anymore. It's still present. How do those type of things affect the education? How does the government affect the education? And there, there are a lot of similarities and I could spend hours talking about that. And you can, and I'll share my global education guide link with you in a moment. And that, if you want, you can go ahead and read that and there's lots of. This whole idea of Atity Deva Abhava, a guest is God. They made me feel like that when I was there. And I'm planning on sharing that with our TEA fellows as they come in. So, as Dr. Hirsch mentioned, we're going to be learning who our hosts are this Thursday and the following Thursday, we get to meet them. And finally, on February fourth, we're going to be hosting our TEA fellows at Chompsut High School. And every school I went into, they threw a big welcoming ceremony. And the, our, the five members of this year's Chompsut High cohort, we've planned, we're planning one of those as well. And we'd like to invite all of you. It's gonna be nice, bright and early, seven nineteen in the morning on the fourth. And we'd love to have you come and greet people. We will have five, five international fellows. Don't know what countries they are from yet. But this could run the gamut from Cameroon to Ghana to India to all over the world. So, we'd love for you to come and greet them. We're gonna try to get some of their performing groups, maybe the a cappella groups or the band. Welcome them as well. And if any of you wanna say a little welcome, we'd love to have you participate in that. Feel free to email me. And then some of the things we're gonna do, of course, they're gonna be visiting for five weeks on Mondays. And feel free to stop in on any of those days if you ever wanna chat with them. They, they have amazing stories. These are some of the top teachers in the world. My hosts, while I was in India, one of them was recognized as the National Teacher of the Year this past year. We were so excited for her. And these are the kind of people that are coming over to us to learn how to become more accessible for the students. And to improve their own education. So, if they're treating us as one of the marks to follow, it's amazing. We're gonna be hosting lunches and socials during the schools, so the students can interact with them, not necessarily in the classroom. And we can reach out to the students who don't have the five teachers. They will be back, I believe the schedule says March fifth for the school committee?
Yes.
So, okay, good. I'm glad I got that right. So, they will be coming to visit you as well then. And then we're looking at possibly visiting elementary classrooms, getting them out of just the high school, see some of the other schools. And get them to experience all the amazing things Chompsut has to offer. My website and blog, that is my Global Education Guide, where you can learn about my teaching philosophy and how it's changed because of this global visit. And you can read my whole blog of my entire trip, so if you have like a spare three or four hours to read. But there's more, more amazing pictures. So, please feel free to visit that.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Coming back to your classrooms in Chompsut, after having spent this period in India, did you, do you recognize? Aha, now I understand how this student learns. Did you see a history? You know, you could make sense of their educational history because of your trip.
So, yes. So, there are students who, you're talking, students have come from other countries. Yes, very much so. I, I've, I, I see things that I wouldn't have picked up on before.
That's fascinating, isn't it?
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and my goal is beyond what I've learned, is to share this with my students. I've already started changing my curriculum, especially my environmental science class, to making kids think about what is this world problem? And how can we fix it? What water quality or energy use or those type of things. So, hoping to kind of grab those kids who have those experiences that I'm like, ah, I see.
It must make them so proud for you to have had such a positive experience and bring that back to the classroom and share it.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
That's awesome.
So, what's the, um, the traditional clothing you're wearing?
So, I'm, India is a very big country, just like the US.
Sure, yeah.
And I'm wearing the traditional formal gear or formal wear of the state of Kerala. India is shaped kind of like an upside down hand. Delhi's up near the middle and Kerala is down near the bottom tip. And it's hot. When I was there, it didn't drop below ninety-eight degrees. And the humidity was never below seventy-five percent. So, it was hot. And they wear, this is called a dhoti. It's kind of a fancy skirt. This is the formal one. They have one called a lungi, which is brightly colored. The dhotis are white with the gold stripe.
Oh no, stay standing.
Would you like, I can?
Yeah, we'll get a better.
Okay. And I'm wearing pants now, because it's very cold here. So, yeah, they were typically, teachers would wear a button down shirt like this and a dhoti to teach. There's things you can do with the skirt, to flip it up and make it more comfortable and easier to walk in, but I'm not gonna demonstrate that here.
How are teachers viewed over there? They respected, they, or they just, they had to do a job and get the kids to the next level?
That's a great question. It depends on where you are. Many of them are respected. They're not put up on pillars, but they're not, it's not the premier job, but it's a good job. A lot of, we got to visit a, a school that was training teachers. The, one of their biggest challenges, you can get your teaching certification after a year in college. And that's, there's, yep, you get one year and some of the classes are, how do you make a model out of clay? And while that's a, that'd be really cool to learn for my class, that doesn't get into the how to engage a student. How to reach out. And so, that's some of the challenges there. But it's, they're, they're recognized as being an important part of the community, but they're not a, yeah.
Not a prestigious job?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Is it just coincidental that both you and Linda are science teachers or are they looking for science teachers for this program?
It is amazing that Chompsut got more than one teacher.
Okay.
There were over four hundred applicants from the US and seventy of us were chosen. And when people started realizing we were both from the same school, some even the people that were making the decisions like, oh, interesting. So, it, it doesn't happen that we're both, random chance.
Yeah, so they're teach from all fields that are in these programs?
And in fact, actually, I was originally waitlisted and I found out sometime mid-September. That, not this past year, but the previous year, that I was put in and they were already two weeks into the, that really intense college course. I had a lot of catching up to do, so.
Can you just talk, you said they treated you really respectfully and they helped you to, to a, I don't know if you said on a platform or type thing. But can you explain a little bit about that, like what?
So, every time you show up to a place, they give you the bindi, which is the, the mark they put on your forehead to. It's a sign of utmost respect. They give you lays when they walk in. Everybody, they're throwing flower petals on the ground where you're walking. Food, lots of food. They treat you to a banquet every time you walked into a building. And they always went out of their way to make you feel like you were amazing. So, they would give up on any of their own things just to make sure that you were having the best time you could ever have.
Was that consistent throughout your study?
Wherever I was and whenever we went somewhere, it was that way. So, people just, they would do anything they could to make you feel like you were amazing.
You said that the top tier kids have the opportunity to move on in their education. What happens to the kids who don't?
A lot of them will go find jobs or.
Have the technical training for them or?
Not really.
Okay.
A lot of it becomes hands on. I'm gonna go find a plumber to, they don't really have plumbing. But they'll go find somebody to kind of apprentice under. Or figure out some way to help out the family, whether it's gardening or working in a store. Yeah, there's not a, not a whole lot of training for those who finish high school but don't move on to college. Those that do move on to college, it's a hundred percent free, all the way through PhD.
Just one thing you said, before they get to like eleventh, twelfth grade, you had mentioned, I mean, they've actually like weeded children out of the school system entirely?
Yeah. So, in the school I was, in the school I was in at tenth grade, they're kind of like, alright. You're not gonna be able to cut it in eleventh and twelfth. You might wanna go consider doing other things. Eleventh and twelfth grade are almost like a junior college, so.
It's like some real Hunger Games stuff right there.
I, I'd say probably maybe twenty or thirty percent of the kids end up dropping out. At that tenth grade and not moving on to eleventh and twelfth. They still get like a completion after tenth grade, like a.
Right, but they've actually moved people out of, there's people gone out of the school system. That's incredible. Okay. Makes you appreciate our system.
Oh, yes.
I'm a fan. That's why I participate. Anybody have anything else?
Did you notice, other than the college application, you know, test, is testing a big part of their system?
Yes, that's part of the reason they figure out how to weed people out. It's, it's a.
From elementary school on?
Elementary, um, elementary not so much. Elementary, they're, they're just very closer to what we have here for elementary. But once they hard, start hitting those later years, it becomes, I'm gonna lecture, you're gonna listen, you're gonna study at home, you're gonna take a test. And the test, you fail the test, it's nice knowing you.
You, you'll find in many of the countries that there's comprehensive exams and they usually start like what we'd be, what we consider sixth grade here.
Yep.
And that helps them decide what, like what class, next school they're gonna go to sometimes.
Cause some, some areas like, you know, it helps determine which school. So, one of the schools I visited in Delhi was the top school. And that's the one you saw the Director of Education, cause that's his pride and joy. And you had to get like a perfect score and have excellent marks and have a rich parents to get into that school. And then there's other lesser schools that you could still go through and still do pretty well. It's kind of a, a tiered school system.
What kinds of things did they wanna find out about this place?
There are lots of good questions. There was one school I visited, they, they wanted to know all about our curriculum and all about teachers and how we interacted. And then there was other ones that were like, what's the food like? Do you all eat? They all thought we ate Chinese food for lunch. I'm like, um, no.
Sometimes.
Yeah. So, they wanna know about the food and what some of the activities that the students would do. I brought along with me some slides, sharing some of the great activities Chompsut High does. And they would ask questions about those. The questions varied.
Do they have misconceptions from movies?
From movies?
They have movies?
Um, so, there were, there, we.
Isn't I asking, sometimes you get questions about cowboys and guns. We got guns.
Yeah, we have guns, but.
And there's a lot of misconceptions out there. I mean, even the T fellows that came last year, they did not believe that we had American flags in our, in our classes. They thought that we made that up. And all of a sudden, they're like, you guys really do. And you stand up and you do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, they don't understand some of the nuances that happen. Same with us, we don't understand. That's part of the, even the T program is, first thing they do is they educate everyone onto how to handle each of the cultural differences. Like you may not be able to shake someone's hand. You may not be able to be in the same room as someone without another female in the room. There's all sorts of things. So, you have to go through those cultural pieces before you can even get to the educational piece.
I did have someone propose to me.
You did?
Yeah, a high school kid. I was a little weirded out by that one, but.
He said no, right?
Yeah. Very happily married.
Ask, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for hearing your experience.
Thank you for coming tonight. Presentation number four. So, we actually have Bill Silver, our Technology Director. And I know there's staff and parents in the district as well. Bill is gonna provide us with a. Excuse me, he's gonna provide us with a little update on technology. And as you know, we've been talking a lot this fall and as the school year started. About supporting a one-on-one computer initiative within the district. So, there's been a committee that Bill's gonna talk about, that's done a lot of work over the course of the year on that. And I'm not gonna take too much of his presentation, but invite Bill to, to share with us what's happening in technology and within that recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Lang. School committee, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. Alright, so, uh, I have a few slides for you, I'm gonna give you a brief update from, uh, basically the summertime through present. And then I wanna talk to you a little bit about the, uh, one-to-one steering committee that we formed and, uh, some of the outcomes from that group. Uh, this summer, I told you that, uh, we were looking at upgrading all of the infrastructure to all of the different buildings. Um, and we actually have finally finished that, it's all complete, uh, all six schools that were not. Uh, that were not prior, previously finished are now finished. The town capital funded our McCarthy, Harrington, and Center School, and then we did get, uh, grant from the state for about six hundred and thirty-four thousand. That did the CHS buy him and sell through, uh, so now we have all new switching, we have all new wireless and all new fiber connections. Uh, and every single one of our schools, and, uh, seems like everything's been working fantastically, we have not had any complaints about it. Um, wireless devices, uh, now the capacity to run at wired speeds, and, uh, you know, last year at this time. I think I was telling you about how we had to shut kids' wireless access off at the high school and things like that, uh, no longer a concern. We can load that, load that thing up with as many devices as we want and it will still chug along. Um, another piece that we, uh, put in place this year, as you know, all MCAS testing has to be done online. Um, so obviously we needed a lot more devices to be able to allow that to happen within the testing window. Uh, so CHS, McCarthy, and Parker all just received, uh, ten new Chromebook carts. All the elementaries just received, uh, five additional Chromebook carts. Uh, so that will definitely allow us to finish all the testing within the window, and, uh, I saw an email from one of the middle schools. And they went from testing around twenty-seven days down to eleven days. Uh, and, you know, hopefully with the, the start of a one-to-one initiative, we can actually get that down to around four days in the future. Um, that's a huge difference, now a building doesn't have to be on basically shutdown the whole time, uh, everyone's testing. We can kinda bang it out and move on with, uh, with our curriculum. Okay, uh, so I'm gonna get into the steering committee, uh, section of the presentation. Uh, the steering committee, uh, was made up of twenty-four participants, we had administrators, teachers, tech staff, integration specialists. Uh, student support, uh, union representation, parents, basically every stakeholder group. Um, that you would wanna include in making decisions about, uh, implementing a large-scale one-to-one initiative, uh, were part of this committee. And, uh, at the end of the committee, basically, we have generated a, a comprehensive document. Um, that'll be more of a reference guide for administrators, teachers, students, and parents. Uh, and the guidelines that we follow are actually, uh, ISTE topics. And, you know, one-to-one initiatives aren't something that are brand-new, uh, we're not the first district to embark on something like this. So, uh, obviously there are some things that, uh, successful initiatives have shown, and these are the topics that we follow. These are, these were the topics that we covered, uh, obviously we needed a shared vision, uh, so that we're all on the same page about what we were trying to accomplish. With the, uh, one-to-one initiative, and then things like equitable access, adequate funding. Personnel and tech support, empowered leaders, professional learning, uh, instructional framework for curriculum. Student-centered learning, uh, feedback and evaluation, engaged communities, and then the policies that go along with those. And I'm gonna take you through each one of these pieces as quickly as I can. Uh, probably in your packet, I won't read you the whole thing, but there's a copy of our, our shared vision. Um, you know, and this probably was, it's one of the main components of the work the committee did. Um, because it's really where you state everything that you want, you want to one initiative to be about, or. Even technology in general to be, to be about in the district. So, this took several weeks to actually craft, uh, and, and we went back and forth, and everyone, uh, had good input into this. And I feel like at the end of the day, uh, the group really came up with something, uh, that was valuable. And will really drive the one-to-one implementation. Alright, and this, uh, document, I think you probably also got a copy of the entire, uh, document. That'll go up online for, you know, everyone to be able to, uh, to see. Uh, and each one of these sections probably has, you know, a page to four pages of various information, so I'll just give you the highlights. The equitable access, uh, component is the idea that every member of the organization has access to the technology that will make them successful. Uh, all schools, like I just talked about, have an enhanced infrastructure, all schools have robust wifi. All schools have high-speed internet access, and that'll also be something that we're looking to upgrade this summer. And all schools have access to digital resources for learning, and, you know, with the upgrades to the infrastructure. Uh, it put us, you know, a couple of years ahead of schedule. Uh, we, originally, I, I thought we probably wouldn't be at this point where we could deliver a one-to-one implementation. Uh, probably until twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, uh, but we're, we're ahead of the curve now. And all of these things are available to, uh, every staff member, every student. Uh, for consistent and adequate funding, uh, obviously this is an investment. Um, it's gonna be a substantial yearly expenditure, uh, but it's an important yearly expenditure. Um, superintendent has identified the school choice revolving fund as a place that can adequately fund our initiative. Uh, so this is kind of a basic breakdown, it's, uh, it's an estimate based on some pricing models, uh, that I've got this year. Um, where we'd staged this in over a four-year period, first year we'd, uh, implement Chromebooks to grades five and grade, grade nine students. That would cost us around fifty-six thousand dollars, and we would do that exact same thing for four years, uh, and just keep leasing those devices. So at the end of four years, you'd have a full implementation from five to twelve, grades five to twelve. Uh, with a sustained cost of about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year to do that.
Now, is that just devices, does it include repair and upkeep and?
That's just devices, the plan, um, that we discussed with the steering committee, there are some things we definitely can repair on Chromebooks. But we're not talking about thousand-dollar laptops, these are like two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar devices. So there's some things that it's just not worth it to repair, just to get the part, uh, you could almost replace the device for. So, uh, our plan will be to lease, uh, an additional amount to what, uh, the actual student population is. And then we'll go with a, a practice of just a swap-out, and if we can fix the unit that we got back, we'll certainly do that, and if it's beyond repair. Then we'll, we'll lose that unit.
When you talk about, um, the two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand as being for the devices, will that include everything that's gonna go on it in terms of the kids will need? In order to be able to effectively use it in the classroom?
Yeah, well, that's the beauty of, um, the Chrome devices, we really, there are no applications to be installed on it. Um, everything is basically browser-based, there are some extensions and, you know, there are some apps, uh, like you see for phones and things. That you can install, the vast majority of them are free, um, and the students will only be allowed to install the ones that we approve for installation. So, basically, anything they need can be accomplished with just that device.
And just, uh, a quick follow-up to that, um, would that include things like, um, I know that there's, um, um, music software that kids need for homework? Would that include that, or would that be something separate that we would have to?
That would likely be something separate, but, um, you know, however they're accessing that today, if they're accessing it online. If it's in an online format, the Chromebook can access it.
Parents have to purchase it at this point, um, so I didn't know if we would be including it as just, uh, part of what we do, or something that parents would still be required to purchase.
Yeah, if, if, uh, parents presently are, uh, spending on a specialty software, they would continue to buy that specialty software.
And things like graphic arts classes and things like that, that would all, would we have to do anything special for, you know, that for their devices?
So, um, a lot of the graphics art classes utilize the Mac platform, they'll still need to utilize that in their classroom. You know, but there's only a few of those labs at the high school really that, uh, it's being utilized then, so for basically everything else, the Chromebook would suffice.
Yeah, these are more general purpose, right, they're not specialty.
Right, you know, we, we could, I'm sure, run a virtual environment to allow some of that software to run, and, you know, we're looking at that. Uh, regards to like engineering software and things like that, so it's something that could develop in the future, out of the gates, we're gonna just.
Alright, I think that, actually, I think the way he just put it probably, I didn't get that piece, so it's a much more general type of.
Right, it's like for homework and email and.
Thank you, alright, thank you.
Good?
Yeah, sorry.
Alright, uh, skilled personnel and tech support, uh, so obviously if you're gonna enter into a, a one-to-one deployment. Um, you need a great amount of technical support and very skilled staff. Um, right now we have four integration specialists, several of whom are, are here, uh, to assist users with best practice integration techniques. Um, three of these, uh, work in the, uh, proposed one-to-one initiative grade levels. So basically, we have three people, uh, across the five-to-twelve spectrum. That can support teachers on a one-to-one basis and help them, uh, integrate technology into their curriculum. Um, we also have a tech director, a network admin, a service manager, a solutions engineer, and three technicians. Um, so I feel like we're well-staffed to roll this out and kind of take on, uh, the tickets and see where we stand at the end of that. But I, I believe we, um, we have what it takes to get it out there and off the ground. Uh, power leadership is, uh, one of the key components, and this was a section that we asked the, uh, the principals really to take a close look at. Um, so the whole idea of, uh, one-to-one initiative is that we're gonna put devices in teachers' hands and in kids' hands. And we're gonna ask them to kinda change what's been happening in the classroom, and to take risks and do different things that engage students. Uh, and, you know, grab their interest and keep it, and, uh, you know, similar to what you just heard from Brian a few minutes ago. To not, uh, just stand and, and lecture and then test, but to have kids have choice in their education. And have kids participate actively in their education. That's gonna look very different in a number of different classrooms, and it's going to take time for teachers to get the hang of it and for students to get the hang of it. So during that time, uh, we wanna make sure that the proper supports are in place and that, uh, everyone is an empowered leader. So, that goes for central office, supporting principals, principals supporting teachers in their classrooms, and right down to teachers. Um, really supporting students as they embark on, on this, uh, one-to-one as well. Ongoing professional learning is a key component to this, uh, initiative, and this is probably the one that, you know, obviously, uh, teachers were very concerned about. They wanna make sure that they have the skill set built so that they can deliver the, the quality instruction that we know that they can deliver, uh, using technology. So, this is something where, you know, we don't just give them one PD class and then sort of turn them loose. We'll continue to, uh, skill build, we've been doing it for a few years, offering various professional development, uh, courses. We've now implemented a graduate-level blended learning class, uh, and then our TIS group has made. Uh, all kinds of different self-paced, uh, Google classes for teachers that they can, you know, they can take. At their, uh, on their own time, at their own pace. Um, and then we'll obviously still use things like half-day, PD, and then, uh, meetings with our TIS and, and, you know, small group instruction. Um, to continue to the skill build with teachers. Uh, in addition to that, um, because, like I said, we had many stakeholder groups on the steering committee. Uh, it also was brought, brought up during these meetings that parents are gonna need some of this type of training as well. Um, so we're gonna have similar classes available, self-paced classes available to parents. Uh, they'll be able to sign up and, uh, take the same things that teachers will, and, uh, we'll also have face-to-face sessions with them. You know, before we do any deployment, so this summer, prior to the, the school year starting, we'll, um, we'll have some training sessions for parents. Alright, uh, the instructional framework for curriculum, so this basically talks about, um, you know, we'll have these devices. Then what do we do with them, so, uh, basically, U, UDL, the universal design for learning. Uh, we can implement all of those best practices, uh, with the one-to-one initiative. Uh, data, I think, is gonna become much more available for administrators and teachers, so that they can review it and then make adjustments to their curriculum and instruction. Uh, blended and student-centered learning, uh, something that we've been working on, uh, you know, probably in education for years. But having a one-to-one initiative really opens a lot of doorways for that. And, and really makes it more powerful in the classroom, and teachers who have, have taken our blended learning course now. Uh, they, you know, some of the strategies that they've been able to implement, uh, you know, they can't stop talking about. And, you know, it's this whole idea of really, uh, grouping kids with similar skill sets, being able to work, you know. With five or six kids at once while other kids are working at their own pace on other things. And taking the classroom basically from twenty-three, twenty-four kids down to like a five-on-one. Uh, really allows teachers to, to get through a lot of material and really make sure that kids understand it. At the same time, kids are, are working on things that are important to them or they have choice in. Uh, you know, they might wanna be on the iExcel program, they might wanna be researching, uh, further something that they learned in class. But they have the ability to do that, uh, in a student-centered classroom. And then, uh, finally, we'll have a common platform to deliver course content, and that will be Google Classroom. Uh, it's one thing I've heard a lot of from parents, uh, and from teachers that, uh, they're, they feel like there's too many places that they need to go. To figure out what's happening sometimes in class, and this will give our teachers one place to put all of their materials. And, uh, parents will have one place to check to see, you know, exactly what's coming up in class. Student-centered learning, I just touched on it, uh, there, but, uh, this is the belief that learning moves, uh, students from passive receivers. Um, to active participants. What students learn, how they learn it, and how their learning is assessed are all driven by each individual student's needs and abilities. Uh, and technology use is always guided by two criteria, what's appropriate for the task at hand? And how can activities be designed to develop higher-order thinking skills? And again, this isn't a, a new philosophy, but it's gonna, going to actually allow us to, uh, implement this type of classroom. By, by having a, a one-to-one initiative. The feedback and evaluation component, uh, obviously you have to assess what you're putting out there and figure out if it's working, if it's not working. What components are working, um, so that's gonna be a crucial piece. And the way that, uh, the steering committee decided we should do this is to survey, uh, teachers, survey students. Survey parents and survey administrators, uh, through, uh, Google forms. And these are things that, uh, we actually need to build, so my hope was, next year during some of the professional development time. Uh, with the fifth and ninth grade teachers, uh, that, some of that will be used for actually building out some of the question sets. Because then they'll have an idea of what they've seen and what they want, what do they really need to learn or hear for feedback? To evaluate, uh, what the one-to-one implementation has, has achieved or not achieved. Uh, engage communities, to realize the full value of, uh, technology, educators need support from families and the community. Families require information and education, so, uh, you know, we were lucky to have, uh, uh, several parent, uh, participants on the steering committee. And they were able to bring back questions that they were hearing, uh, from other parents and fr- um, from PTOs. And, uh, this is how we, we decided that we would provide some type of, uh, training program for parents. The other things that came from the steering committee were that we'll address parent questions and concerns. And as we receive questions or we, or we answer these questions, we'll create a fac- a frequently asked questions page on the website so that they can go and see, you know, other questions that have been asked. Maybe they, uh, have something similar and they can see, uh, a lot of Q and A on a frequently asked, uh, questions page. Uh, again, we'll offer education which parallels the skill building being offered to staff. Um, and then, you know, some of the questions that came in, um, during the steering committee was, you know, what happens if a parent doesn't want a child to be on a device, you know? Uh, so these were things that the steering committee needed to make decisions on. You know, and the, and the decision was, sometimes a parent is not gonna want a student on a device, and that's okay. They can still come, learn, and, uh, participate in class, and they don't have to be on a device that particular day. Uh, what happens if a student doesn't remember to bring their device? I don't know any kids that ever forget anything at home. Uh, at least mine never have. So if a student doesn't remember to bring their device, we'll have some loaners available in the library. You know, things like, how can we be sure families will have internet access? Uh, in our documentation, there are, uh, there are resources for, for parents. Anyone who's, uh, uh, eligible for free and reduced lunch, they can go to Comcast, they can get internet for nine dollars a month. And all the guidelines on how to apply for it are there for them. So again, the, the committee put a tremendous amount of work into sort of listening to, to feedback, listening to various questions, and then trying to find solutions to them. And a lot of that is in the, uh, the long documentation that, uh, will be available to everybody. Uh, and then finally, the protocol and policies, this is probably one of the most important components because this is what, this is how we, um, describe to parents and students how we want them to behave with the devices and what our expectations are. And then what happens if expectations are not met? So it goes for everything from the expectations for use in school, use outside of school, the care of the devices, uh, appropriate use of audio and video recording functions, uh, you know, network connectivity, student safety, uh, parent responsibilities, lost, loss and theft. Uh, and then there's a, an agreement that parents and students will sign off on. So, uh, that has the language that the steering committee felt comfortable putting together. I know that, um, the admin staff still wants to go through that, and ultimately, that will come back to you to, uh, to take a vote on.
Have you considered the, the school committee policies also that are in these areas? Cause we did, just redo all our policies, there's some things on digital media and everything else in those.
Yeah, so they'll, um, this, this document will actually reference a lot of the policies that the school committee has. So it'll, it'll tell them, this is the expectation, and here's where you see the explanation of that expectation. Uh, finally, you know, I just wanna thank all the participants. You know, there are twenty-four people that were involved in this, that, uh, this has been ongoing since October. Uh, several meetings, a lot of offline work, um, we collaborated over Google quite a bit. And I think this was some real thorough work. And I think that, uh, what we presented is, uh, uh, you know, the beginnings of a very successful one-to-one implementation. Uh, this will, this is a, a good foundation, it's a good starting point. And none of this is ever gonna be, uh, you know, set in stone. Everything is going to, to change, it's going to be modified as we start the program and we see, you know, what works well, what doesn't work well, some things that we, you know, we thought we had answered properly, but we needed to, uh, come back and take a look at. So it'll always be pretty fluid, uh, but I believe we have a good starting point here.
Just to jump in for a second before there's any questions and discussion. I think, um, well, we talked over the summer and then heading into the fall about the initiative. Um, you know, we really kind of gave the, um, bill and the steering committee just some general kind of, uh, outline. You know, we'd really like to see, um, a one-on-one type initiative. Uh, I think we have the funding to be able to support that. I think that is a step that, bless you, that the district, um, could and should take as far as getting more technology in the hands of our students doing it. You know, I was very happy that we're gonna be able to recommend doing this at two grade levels instead of one financially. Um, so there was just kind of a shell to work from. But the group really put a tremendous amount of time going through this project, um, coming up with the proposal. Again, the document itself, I think, is more, um, comprehensive than, um, the PowerPoint presentation. It's a good, you know, it's, it's a good forty-page document. Bill was nice enough to put that into some overarching slides. But there was a significant amount of work that was done. And there's, as he, Bill says, there's still more to come. Because as we actually implement and roll an, an initiative like this out, we're gonna learn things about it. And I think, again, similar to some of the discussions we've had around even security implementation, where you're not doing it all at the same time, you know, what you learned from year one, we're gonna wanna modify and come back and make improvements for year two before you roll it out. But I think it's significant, I, I'm very excited about this. I appreciate the work, um, Bill and the staff and, uh, parents and all the volunteers on the, um, on the committee did to, to bring this, um, to bring this to you. So I'd love to have, um, you know, some input and some discussion and questions. Just so you know, uh, kind of processing-wise, um, there's really, at the end of this, there's no action requested of the committee this evening. That will actually come as part of the budget recommendation, uh, for next year. Uh, at our next meeting in February, when we, we recommend that, I'll be including a recommendation in that, that document. Uh, but wanted to have the discussion with you this evening to be able to talk, talk some of this through, answer the questions you may have. And again, just thank and appreciate the work Bill, the staff, and, uh, the members of the, the planning committee put into this.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Just a comment, I wanna say that a lot of the parents I've spoken to, uh, this one-to-one has come up. And, uh, there's a lot of people that are really excited for it. So thank you for doing all the work.
Great.
I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Any else?
So a couple of things. Um, one is, is, is there any cost savings to us as a result of implementing this? Or like, is, in other words, would be other things that we won't have to necessarily invest money in because we're going to be doing this?
Yeah, I, uh, out of the gates, there's not going to be a cost savings. As, you know, as teachers learn to, uh, create more digital content and deliver everything digitally, you will definitely see a cost savings in things like paper and toner, uh, co- you know, just copier costs. You know, will it be to the point that we'll save two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars? I, I don't know that. But I think savings will be significant on the digital side of things. You know, and I expect to see that, uh, you know, like, this committee's talked about. I don't expect every fifth grade and ninth grade teacher next year to have every single one of their classes digitized and ready to go on the first day. That's not possible, it's not, uh, it, it's not even a realistic expectation. This is going to take time to phase in, but that's why we've sort of phased this in over a four-year period. Everyone's gonna get the opportunity to sort of build and grow. But I think by the time you see, uh, the fourth year of the implementation, you'll see many, many of those, uh, paper costs and things like that definitely diminish.
Will textbooks be, uh, you know, eventually available online on these computers?
So many of our textbooks are available online right now. You know, and there are various other things that, uh, Dr. Hirsch and I have talked about and, and her folks. You know, and that's namely getting PDF copies of books because we already have paid for these, uh, licenses and things like that and being able to share those out to students through, through classroom. You know, so, look, make no mistake, the textbook companies, they're not allowed to lose money. They're still gonna charge you for, uh, every kid accessing a book. Whether or not we have a hard cover, cover book being brought home every night, uh, you know, that's a different story, but, um, they're still gonna get their, their money.
Absolutely.
We can do that, too, that takes the burden off the kids, too, keep bringing those books back and forth every day.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. I didn't know if it would be less expensive.
Yeah, even just a PDF copy of its access if you're on chapter something. Uh, but it is hard with the licensing because the licensing is, uh, as expensive as the book. So that's kind of what he's talking about.
Yeah, no, I kinda, I was hoping it would be a little less expensive, you know, I don't know, call me crazy.
Over the years, that backpack will get smaller, though.
Yeah, well, I mean, that was another thing that came up in the committee. I don't, you know, if you walk through, especially in middle school, I see it. These poor kids and the three-hundred-pound binder that they have in front of them. Sometimes the binder, I swear, is bigger than the kid holding it. And, uh, you know, like, that's another thing that definitely can go away over time. You know, everything becomes available to the, to the child in their Google account, you know? They don't have to carry all of that stuff around. Also, you know, things like school supplies for, for parents in the summertime, they don't have to go nuts running around finding, you know, four red notebooks or, you know, whatnot, cause everything will be online.
Right tradition. Why grade five? Why grade five and nine as opposed to grade seven, say, for example?
So the, the way that I like to see this work out is that we perform a four-year lease of the device. So if we start in grade five, obviously that takes them right through the end of their middle school career, at which point they turn that device back in, get a new one in ninth grade, and then take that through twelve. If we sort of put it halfway, I just feel like it would get kind of funny with the leases. And then, you know, when do they turn the device in? Now I've got a device that's two years old. Do I give that to the new seventh grader? So this makes it clean. Everyone starts from five and nine.
But there's no issues like developmentally for kids? Okay, all right.
This makes more sense, too, just the, the structure we have set up of grade five through eight and then nine through twelve.
Yep.
I think, can I jump in for one second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think the other thing that, um, that we're also looking at is, um, last year, our, like, all of our fourth grade students are currently in the modular classrooms in the new schools.
Right.
So they have the newest and latest technology, uh, in the buildings. And then, so they're used to this kind of digital instruction.
Right.
They're used to having the newest, um, escapement, the digital TV and whatnot in their rooms. And then they go into fifth grade, and we don't have that right now. So, uh, we are also looking, aside from this, at some, you know, capital improvements internally, um, with some recommendations around, and again, a lot of this is just financially money-dependent, but being able to, uh, provide that same level of, uh, classroom technology in the fifth grades. So that when the students are going from fourth to fifth, they're kind of having a continuum of their experience, and they're not having a high-intensity tech year in fourth grade, and then they go to fifth with nothing. So, you know, we will be looking to out, cause we can't do it all at the same time. But out grade, uh, out fifth, let's say, the fifth grade classroom is with the interactive technology like we have in fourth grade. They then have the device they use to fifth grade, and we can do it year by year. We financially couldn't afford to do eight-grade levels at the same time.
Sure.
And, um, I think it makes sense, continuity instruction-wise, to go from fourth having it, up to fifth and having it, and continuing on with a student. So that was about of the rationale as well.
Can I keep going?
You, you may now go, yes.
No, no, I meant, is it okay if I keep asking questions?
Oh, no, please, yeah, I just wanted to jump in.
You're all just into a night.
I just wrote these down, there's no, like, stop it. There's, there's no particular, it's just what popped into my head as I was going through this. How, how much of, uh, so I guess, so I'm looking at this as a teacher, right? And I'm, and I'm thinking about, like, how would, how would this work? How much time will it be used in instruction? And does it take away from, you know, that very important face-to-face type of instruction? And then beyond that, how does this interface with our social emotional learning that we're trying to also promote in the classroom environment?
So, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to the, does it take away from the face-to-face learning? It absolutely doesn't. Um, if anything, it gives an opportunity to make that better. Right now, a teacher might not have the capacity because there is not enough technology to set up a couple of stations in their room for kids to work on other things while they have these five kids with similar abilities in front of them. If I give them that opportunity, it only improves the amount of time that they can spend with those kids with, like, like abilities.
Well, but then you're assuming that the ones that you've left to work independently are actually working independently.
Certainly. You know, there's gonna be, that, there's gonna be a process to that, right? So that's gonna become about classroom management, it's gonna become about setting high expectations for kids. It's, it's about things that teachers know how to do. That's what they do for a living. So, uh, I don't have a concern that a teacher's not gonna be able to manage their class and get the kids to work on the appropriate things that they, that they need to work on. I think the bigger thing is, you know, what, what's the preparation to get to that point look like for teachers, right? Cause there's a, there's a heavy lift in the beginning to this. But once they've done that lift, then they can reuse all of that information, year in and year out, semester in and semester out.
I agree, Bill. We have a one-on-one, and we, you know, we're probably in our fifth or sixth year. And it, it is a learning experience, the first couple of years. And, but, you know, once you get used to it, you know, as a teacher, it, you know, it is a great tool.
Absolutely, and I, I can completely see that, I really can. I, I, I'm, I think I'm asking, uh, just for clarification, for my own purposes, but also for people watching at home, you know, that may not, um, be as familiar with, with the one-to-one process.
Yeah, yeah, make no mistake, like, this is not, all of a sudden, kids are coming to school, they sit in front of the computer all day, and the computer is the only thing that they're learning from? They, they wouldn't come to, to school if that was the case. They'd be in an online, uh, school or something like that. This is, this is not, what we're looking to accomplish is to have technology not be an addition to the curriculum, but a seamless, uh, integration, uh, you know, an immersion into the curriculum. So it becomes a fundamental part of delivering the curriculum.
And then I'm sure you know, kids can get around anything. It's amazing, just absolutely fascinating.
Some things, yeah.
Yes. Um, so how will we make sure that, um, we're, you know, monitoring this and that, uh, you know, kids aren't dumb? I know that they're going, there's an agreement that they're going to sign on to, but...
So, uh, kids right now, uh, obviously use technology in, in the district daily. We have a, a filter and firewall system in place that is super compliant, uh, which it has to be, uh, for schools. And that does the, the filtering of, you know, the naughty websites, things that they shouldn't be allowed to get to. Do sometime, you know, uh, sometimes can they slide through? Yeah, occasionally they do, but generally, uh, those types of things are detected and then a rule's written that, you know, stops them from doing that. Sometimes within minutes, sometimes, you know, uh, even less. So, will they always try? Absolutely. Can I stop them from going on their, their phone or tethering off of their phone? Not right now, we're looking at systems that will disable that. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll continue to provide the, the best possible, uh, security that we can and, uh, keep them safe while they're with us.
Why not BYOB?
Yeah, I, you know, we could've gone down that road, uh, this district...
BYOB.
I said it's not equitable.
Sorry, sorry, I said, not BYOB, BYOD, thank you. Where's my mind tonight, huh? I saw Eileen Young, I immediately think BYOB. I don't know why that is.
Okay, uh, so, Beu- uh, Bring Your Own Device has been available in Chelmsford for years since before my tenure here. Uh, but the only thing we see kids bringing are phones, for the most part.
Yeah.
Right? A couple of kids may bring laptops now and again. And that's certainly still welcome to do, that's why the, the policy exists. But the biggest trouble to, to that is that we can't guarantee equitable access for every single kid that way. Uh, if I supply the device, I know every single one of these kids has exactly the device that I want them to have, uh, that's gonna perform the way that we need it to perform and let teachers do what they need to do with it to make sure that the kids get the proper instruction. Outside of that, if I just let them bring whatever they want, um, I have no control over them, I can't manage them, I can't stop them from doing certain things. And you need some of that, uh, type of oversight when it comes to, uh, mass deployment.
Um, and what if parents refuse to participate in the training? Is there any, it's just, it's optional for them?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I don't, uh, s- some parents, obviously, are gonna be very tech savvy. Some just wanna come by and maybe ask questions. If, uh, folks don't have any questions, they just wanna sign the document, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
John, you have something?
Yeah, so just a quick question. So kids are gonna be using these and it's potential that they're gonna have PII, they're gonna have social media accounts, things like that. Are you gonna have, um, the ability to do, um, remote wipes, um, tracking, anything like that in case, uh, a laptop gets stolen, or?
Yeah, so essentially, when we set these up in our management system,
Yep.
only the user that it's assigned to will, uh, will be the only one that can log into that device.
Sure.
If someone takes it, it's a brick to them. Even if they were to go ahead and power wash, uh, the device or, you know, format it, anything, as soon as it comes back online, it checks in with Google. Google known, knows that I own... Google known, knows that I own the device, and immediately applies our policies again.
So it's a registered device, that's, that was the exact question I was asking. Okay, thank you.
I think you did a tremendous amount of work, you and your committee. You know, I think that it's worth saying that again, it's just a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I would love that, having the ability to have the Chromebooks. It's such a great help to be able to have, like, everything, especially having Google Classroom. Um, a couple of my classes have that, and it just, it's very organized. I have it for my Spanish class, and I, I know what I have for homework, I know what my assignments are for the day, I, all my research is on there. It's, everything's kind of compact, where like, in other classes where it's not like that, it's, you're running around through your folders, and you're going through papers, and you're trying to find the syllabus, and it's just, it's much easier to have everything in one place.
Um, and with that, I, I went to a semester school sophomore year, and we had computers there, and it was so helpful for me to, like, be able to take notes on my computer and just have that with me constantly, um, so that when I went home, first of all, I could, like, be working on notes with other people. I could be doing collaborative notes, like, if I had questions, I could ask my friends as, like, if I was giving a lecture, I could ask my friends as it was happening, or we could go over something, and I could, like, star things right then and there, and make sure that I knew to ask questions from my teacher, from friends, or whatever. It was so helpful to have that access, um, constantly, and not have to, like, be flipping through different pages, that if I forget my notebook one day, I have to write it in a different notebook, and then have to transfer it all over at some point, or just lose those notes, um, for, like, review when it comes to mid-years or finals. And I just think that this is gonna be so helpful for the students.
Donna, as you know, too, you, when they go to college,
Yes, absolutely.
You have to buy your own device.
Believe me, I bought a few.
Um, for your students, and they lose those too. But all of the platforms, even if it's a face-to-face class in college, is going to go through a Blackboard platform.
Absolutely, yes.
So it's the best way to have that.
Yes.
And, um, some of the other pieces, too, is that, you know, when you build that content, if you have a new teacher that's coming into the district, wow, how great would it be to know that at least here's this guide that you can start to build upon for yourself, because we can transfer those classes over? And for the teacher to come back instead of, I mean, we've had those moments where you say, what exactly did they do in that, that class? You now take, it's almost like a virtual notes for yourself.
Absolutely, and a lot of the young teachers, I'm sorry, this is how they, this is what they know. You know, this is just what they know.
My computer, this is my.
Okay.
Aladonna, I mean, Alabbara, is it? Any questions?
One thing, I know that this is gonna come up, but I, 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 when I've gone to my PTL meetings, my other liaisons, uh, meetings, I have brought this up, looking for feedback, but I do, I do think this is, it's important to remind parents that we still are encouraging, you know, questions and feedback, um, about this.
From, for your end, I mean, you know, if, if this were to be approved by the committee, and that's gonna go in front of town meetings, part of the budget process, and we're talking April, you foresee any problems implementing, you know, getting devices and, and, and inventorying devices, and setting your policies, finalizing them, and, you know, getting everybody trained for next fall?
No, a lot of, uh, you know, luckily for us, we've run the graduate, um, blended learning class several times. A lot of our fifth grade teachers have taken it, many of our ninth grade teachers have taken it. Right after February vacation, we're gonna open up the, um, self-paced courses. So that'll allow anyone who didn't get to take the blended learning, they'll have the whole rest of the year and through the summer to do that. Um, and as far as preparing everything to go out, uh, you know, we've had bigger projects than this, so, uh, this will, this will be an easy summer.
I was just gonna say, from the funding standpoint as well, I don't anticipate actually waiting until the Apple Town meeting to make an action. Where at School Choice funding, it's actually available to you at this point. So it will be included within the budget document, but actually, when the school committee reviews and approves the budget at the end of February, um, and you vote to adopt the budget technically with School Choice money, we'll then actually just move forward with the implementation, we won't have to wait until April Town meeting, because it's not contingent on Town Meeting funding. Um, I still want you to take, you know, see the overall budget recommendation, take the time to review it, but when we actually, um, have the school committee level, um, appropriation of the bu, or recommendation of the budget, that's when, uh, we'll actually start to kind of act. So that buys us two months as well, which is, um, which is significant. And I just wanted to add, you know, even just for my own kids, um, you know, one high school age, um, who's not always, um, you know, the most in line as far as having, like, all his documentation together. Um, he utilizes a one-on-one type of, um, uh, program. It's great organizationally to see him be able to, say, go into Google Classroom or see his notes and texts. You know, we don't have as many, uh, things where, oh, I forgot something, a book at school, or I don't know what particular note this is. To be able to have it all there has really kind of helped, and I could see this helping with some of the students with, say, executive functioning issues and, and needs to try to help them, uh, kind of organize themselves a little bit. Um, so I do think it's, it's, um, you know, certainly a good, obviously a good initiative. Um, but I think it's gonna help a lot with, uh, with those kids to help organize.
I, and I don't disagree, I mean, like I said, this is something that I use in the classroom.
Right.
Um, I, I think it's incredibly helpful. Um, I really don't know what I would do without my technology, um, at this, I take my attendance on my phone, you know, if I don't have my computer with me, and there's just so much that technology allows us to be able to do these days. And it is just becoming, um, the way of the world, you know? But I, I do, I do think that we have to be mindful, um, that technology has also been, um, you know, a real, uh, problem, uh, you know, in, in some ways for kids. And so, you know, I just wanna make sure that we have that balance, that's all. And, you know, I think that, you know, my, my questions tonight, um, after I've gone through the documents and everything, um, we're, we're also to help people at home understand,
Sure.
you know, um, some, some things that maybe, you know, that might jump out at them, um, in terms of questions, or, you know, things that, that they may be worried about.
Right.
And I, and I do encourage them to, to reach out to us or to you, um, or your committee for, um, you know, further clarification, or, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, I mean, there is many really great points, and, you know, our document does include things like resources to, uh, you know, online safety, and we teach that to our kids from the time they enter kindergarten all the way to the time they leave. Constantly, I'm teaching them about, uh, online safety and digital citizenship. And these are all, uh, you know, components that kids need to have, because technology is great. There will always be that underlying area of, uh, you know, things that you hope that they don't get into, uh, as far as technology goes. But, you know, if you're educating them and you're training them what to be on the lookout for, uh, we should hopefully be able to overcome that.
Just one more quick question, um, so students, I know they're gonna have the, the laptop. Um, are they gonna be able to access the Google Classroom, say, like, they have a desktop at home they prefer to use?
Absolutely.
So they'll be able to use the login, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, they'll, they'll be able to log into that device, they can also log into the Chrome browser from any internet-enabled device and access their classroom.
That's great, okay.
Just, and I'm not trying to belabor this, but like, one further thing that's helpful. Well, you asked me a question, you really did, but, you know, part of the reason to do this, as opposed to, say, just to bring your own device, is that because we'll actually kind of, it gives us more control, you know, we'll technically own the device. I do see this saving some money when it comes to, say, the testing and assessment. Like, we've had to buy additional Chromebook cards to be able to accommodate the online testing. When we have, uh, individual students now having their own device, we're gonna be able to, you know, not have to purchase separate Chromebook cards. These devices, we can take control of the testing window and implement. We could not do the testing on a personal device, because we can't control that device.
Exactly, yes.
Um, so this certainly, uh, you know, in the long run, when it comes to that, if we have every student in, uh, five through, uh, twelve having their own device, you know, we're not gonna need to buy additional cards for the school, because every, every kid would have a device. Um, so there was some savings there, but there was also that control factor that we can actually kind of help and, why it makes more sense to do this as opposed to just a strict bring-your-own-device.
And now, will those Chromebooks we have filtered out of the elementary school then?
Yeah, I mean, right now, they'll be able to still be utilized, say, in grades six through eight next year, or the high school. But eventually, yeah, we're just gonna have to, um, provide them to the elementary level.
Yeah.
And Bill, you're right, we're not the first community. When we were at the conference in November, there was a lot of talk about communities that are, have already implemented this.
Right.
Um, do you know any, on top of your head, if parents wanted to, you know, I think they probably have some information on their websites and whatnot, that they could look at, um, some communities that are already doing it?
Oh, just, uh, a couple districts, Westford has this, and, and their high school, Burlington has it, Methuen has it, uh, just three right, right near us.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Everybody good?
I'm good, thank you again, Bill.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you committee very much for all the work.
For coming. Great, um, oh, good night, girls. Uh, next report of the evening, uh, report number five. I'm actually gonna ask Joanna, um, to review the second quarter financial report with you. Uh, this is our fiscal two thousand nineteen, uh, report through December thirty-first.
Thank you. In your packet, there's, um, you know, four documents. One is my cover memo, highlights some of the variances, uh, favorable and unfavorable. Then the year-to-date budget report through December. The grant revolving fund summary, and the student activity account balances for the high school and each middle school. Overall, the, um, district is on target with all their, um, finances. There are some areas, um, where we're favorable. On page three, the first one is in the curriculum director, and right now we're a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-five thousand favorable. And one variance that will remain favorable is the, um, we had a vacancy for the coordinator of SCL and Counseling Services from August through December. Um, so that is, um, a third of the variance, thirty-four thousand, four ninety-eight favorable. The rest, um, will just spend on target throughout the year. The next favorable variance is on, on pages five through seven, instruction classroom teachers. And overall, that variance is favorable by four hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. And, um, one component, uh, and we've talked about these in the last quarter, they kind of popped right away, and they'll continue. The lane change account is favorable by sixty-six thousand, three sixty-six, and that'll, um, all the lane changes have been implemented. As a refresher, that's when a teacher achieves a higher degree. And then the, uh, remaining balances, um, we've talked about this, we budget vacancies at a master step three. But if a teacher comes in, um, and, let's say they're at a bachelor step one, we'd be able to favorable variance because of that difference. And conversely, if a internal transfer comes in at a master step eleven, it would be unfavorable. But overall, with all those ins and outs, with all those hundreds of teachers, it nets to a favorable variance. On page seven, the specialist teachers, is a slightly unfavorable, two thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. And this category is for the, um, special education teachers, reading ELL, those type of specialists. And as a refresher, we, um, budgeted an offset to the CHIPS revolving fund for a hundred and fifteen thousand. We'll make that journal entry in the fourth quarter of fiscal nineteen, and then the category will be favorable. The next variance, um, we're s, is in school security, page seventeen. And, um, we're slightly unfavorable, if you, uh, recall, in the September eighteenth school committee meeting, we talked about, uh, having an offset to the transportation revolving fund. Um, and that journal entry, uh, again, will be made in the fourth quarter, and in this category will be slightly favorable. And then on page nineteen, the special ed out-of-district tuitions. Uh, you're familiar with this chart, and the areas that fund the, uh, special ed out-of-district tuitions. This looks unfavorable right now, because we haven't made any of the journal entries for the offsets. We'll do that also at, in the fourth quarter. Overall, we think special ed out-of-district tuitions will be seven million, four hundred and fifty thousand in total tuitions. And then this will be funded, um, four million dollars from the local budget, that's the four, one, one, seven, nine, eight, eight. An offset to circuit breaker of two dot eight million, the School Choice revolving fund, two hundred and fifty thousand, and then the Valley credit, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, five oh two. And after all of that is completed, um, will still, um, be slightly favorable. That's the highlighted number, the two sixty-seven, four ninety. Below that chart is the School Choice revolving fund. Uh, we had a carryover balance, one dot three million. We've received revenue, two hundred and eleven, nine sixteen, these first part of the fiscal year. So we're up at to the one dot five million. Will still receive more revenue. Um, one dot six million, um, before the offset to special ed tuitions we talked about. And then this dovetails with, uh, what Bill Silver just talked about, the balance of the School Choice revolving fund should be one dot three six five million at the end of this fiscal year. I'm gonna pause and ask if you have any questions about the local budget before we move on to the grants and revolving funds?
Very comprehensive as always. Very comprehensive as always.
Agreed.
The grant revolving funds is a, a one-page summary. The very top is, uh, we had some carryover funds, the entitlement grants are two-year, um, duration now. They're all, uh, finished, uh, with the exception of special ed, um, and that one will wrap up. Amy thinks, um, within, you know, maybe by April, May timeframe. Then the next section is the fiscal nineteen grants, and they're all on target. The third section is some of the private grants. E-Rate is in there, we received thirty-six thousand, one thirty-eight, thirty-eight, and we have spent those funds. Then the lower section are the revolving accounts, such as food service, athletics, School Choice again, transportation, student activity. All are, um, no funds are in deficit. And you can see we are expecting the balances to grow. Any questions on the grant or revolving fund summary? And, uh, the last, um, reports are the student activity account balances by club. Uh, one for the high school, um, two hundred and eighty-five thousand in there. And then the McCarthy, little over forty-one thousand, and Parker, little over fifty-four thousand. And then you can see the balance by club.
Now, we taking out, or we talked about taking out clubs, is that? Haven't been active for a while, we, do that yet, or?
Yes.
These are, okay.
Yep, uh, we're, that's, uh, we've, uh, we s, you approved the process of us, um, or, um, we've done it with the high school, we, uh, brought it over to Steve and reviewed it with him, and he signed off on the documents, and then we rolled that into that, we call it the other general student body fund now. And then we're starting that process with the middle schools.
All right, any questions?
Oh, it's really nice.
No, looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so there's, um, I don't know, Joe, there's, there's no issues, uh, financially, we're in solid shape, both on salary, non-salary accounts, no action required tonight, uh, no transfers or harm or anything, so, this is kind of a report of progress. Great. The next report, um, this actually came out of our last meeting, um, Linda prepared a memo on dyslexia screening, and what the, uh, the district was doing on that, so I'd ask Linda that report.
Sure, um, I saw that you would ask for just a little bit of an update, and it's
I saw that you would ask for just a little bit of an update, and it's kind of an update slash non-update at the same time. So they did make that approval for the legislation to have the dyslexia screening, which actually falls under neurological disorders. So it's not just a dyslexia screening, it is actually looking for that piece of neurological disorders on top of that. And they're still in the process of coming up with what the protocol is going to look like, what the screeners could possibly be. So they're not making any recommendations at this point, they're just having a lot of discussions, a lot of webinars involved. And we have had a chance to sit down and kind of talk of like, what does this look like to Chelmsford? One change that we did make is on this current application for students coming in for kindergarten. On top of the questions around, you know, do your children have any learning disabilities in IEP coming from either another district or even within our own district, we did add the question in there of any neurological disorders. So that at least we have that precursor, that when we do get into the screening, we're not now going backwards to our K students. It is my understanding that it's not just for your kindergarten screening, you're supposed to screen them K one, two. So what that tier is going to look like, you know, it's yet to be decided. So as we go through this process, we'll be looking at these screeners, they did provide some, a lot of them are out of California, believe it or not. So we are reading them, seeing what that looks like. And we do have some teachers that would be willing to start to, you know, pilot a screener. Because as you know, our kindergartners come in, and it's more of like a quick gross motor, some quick facts for them. We're also looking at the students as they come in to see, you know, what is their hesitation when they walk into school? So that screener does not pick up, though, for anything that would pick up for dyslexia. And then obviously, we use our DIBL screening for our literacy skills. And that helps the kindergarten teachers actually group them for their reading skills. So unfortunately, we don't have anything in place perfect for the next school year, but we'll be looking at different options that are available to us, and the teachers are really looking into, what does this look like? Because this is something that we'd want to address as students go through, because it will affect their literacy skills, which will then affect all of their schooling skills as they go along.
Any questions? You know, with these new guidelines going into place, I would guess that we're going to identify more kids that have these. Where do we go from there? You know, once we start identifying more kids, what do we do?
Programming.
Programming and everything like that.
Right, actually, I was covering that under budget, under our budget discussion.
Well, it would be a specific learning disability, right? So it's not as if it's just a screener for us to be working within the classroom, but then also educating the teachers. I mean, for example, we have the new L screening, they just went down to the CHIPS program, and they screened fifty-five CHIPS students for L services as when they come into the school district. So every initiative that comes in, you're right, so now these kids will come into kindergarten. What is that going to look like for those teachers? And what's, I mean, the good thing for us is at least, based on the caseloads at the different schools, the L teachers will pick up a caseload. They're almost, even though they're school-based, they're kind of district-based, so they know that if they have a room in their schedule, they'll go over and support that teacher. But then it's that, it's a hit or miss of like, what school is going to have the larger population of Ls, you don't know.
Right, and they don't necessarily tell you what the process is that you should implement, nor did they send a million dollars down.
Oh, absolutely. You purchase the screeners.
Right, exactly.
We already started just to take a look at what those screeners in and of themselves look like. I mean, you know, you're looking at five hundred dollars a packet, so how many do we have to get?
Right.
Who's going to be?
But I think you're trying to get at not only the initial cost of the screener, but what are the interventions of the services?
And that's, that's what I was going to talk about.
And it's not just that intervention separate, it has to be like a double tip in the classroom. Similar to the reading pieces where we pull kids out for reading services, but then there has to be that piece. So that's educating all the teachers as to what those strategies are going to look like for when the students are in the classroom. So it's always a moving target, we tend to do very well with it. I mean, even when the new regulations came in for our students for Ls, well, they weren't new, we just finally started following the law. And we have all our different programming for those students, and there was a significant difference, you can see that even in the testing. So the good news is that we have both special ed and we have our reading coordinator on top of it. And we'll just, as we go along, we'll provide as much support as possible until we actually have a real plan in place.
I think Amy Reese's, one of her areas of expertise is in reading.
Right.
And, yeah, I think this is something that she was very, very interested in.
And we'll bring this up too, at like the, we get together as different districts, we all have the same problems. So we kind of say, okay, what are you doing, what are you doing, how can we implement that in our school district? So this will come up at the next topic at one of our roundtables.
We currently have students in our district who receive services for dyslexia, though, right?
They've been identified, if they've been identified, they would receive services. But this is now, instead of waiting until it's fourth, fifth, sixth grade, you have to do a screening to see if there would be some type of disability coming forward that maybe if we do the remediation now, it will not be as significant. You want to close that gap as much as possible, because those reading skills are going to be in place by, you know, third, third grade.
I think we've heard from a lot of parents, though, that, you know, that what's in place may not necessarily be enough.
Correct.
I think the problem that we have is we haven't been able to quantify what some of those costs will be until we kind of get through this initial round of screening, whatever that's determined to be, to figure out how many additional kids are going to be identified.
And the screening in of itself, I mean, we send in teams of, to go in and do the DIBL screening for our kindergarten students. Now you need, you need to deploy people out to do the screening, especially if you have to go back to, okay, it's K one and two. So who are we pulling, what's that team going to look like? Will be the use of our interventionist, and then that person has to learn the screener. So it's all these little moving parts that go with it. And we will, we'll come up with a strategy to be able to do the screening rather than, you know, saying to the classroom teacher, okay, this is something you have to do, they may not have the expertise in it. So we'll put together some type of teams, but that comes at a cost, it comes at time, and, you know, we only have so many bodies and only so much time during the school day. So as we get that in, though, at least our incoming K kids will eventually be captured prior to entering school. I hate to use the word capture, the p is not the best word, grab, put it somewhere, but, no, we'll get through it, it's just that we don't have enough information. We're learning it and, you know, sailing the ship at the same time.
Good, questions?
At seven in the evening is the personnel report for the month of December. So again, this is your list of new hires, resignations, we didn't have any retirements in December. And we had an assignment change of one of our paraprofessionals in the district. But just very little personnel activity for the month of December, but wanted to share that with you. No action required, just a point of information. Any questions? Paul, you?
Yeah. We're, again, we're opening up the meeting. Anybody that has questions on the budget? Seeing none, anybody on the committee have questions or comments in terms of the budget?
Yeah, one thing I did want to mention from the last meeting, we had someone talk about the social work piece. And I recall that at the tri board meeting, actually, Paul is looking to hire someone for the town. I don't know if you remember that.
Social worker?
Yep, well, actually, he's calling it a community services coordinator. It was part of the packet, part of what he'll be including in his budget.
He did, he had something to the effect of, you know, helping people transition within the town, maybe the elderly, because there's, they don't have a place to maybe access that.
So, and I, I had a chance to speak with him today, and he said this would be available to everybody in town, obviously. You know, families with kids in school and things like that, so I know that's not...
I'll follow up with him.
Okay, and I know that it's not, you know, a complete answer.
Right.
But it is, it is something that will be coming before town meeting as part of the budget for us to approve. Because he did recognize the need in the, for us as a community to have someone in place that can direct people to the appropriate resources when they're in need. So I wanted to follow up on that piece about the, about the social work.
I think with the title, it didn't, didn't click with me.
Yeah, he called it something different, but it seems like a social work.
Yes.
Component.
Right. So I know the governor's budget is coming out on the twenty-fourth.
Friday.
And then, and there's, I think, is it a, I hear a two point seven percent increase in local aid. Do you have any idea what that will look like for us? Probably not, right?
No, what's going to end up happening is there's a conference call Wednesday, which is tomorrow, I'm off because of the holiday. But then the governor's budget, I believe, comes out Friday sometime in the morning. By the afternoon is typically when, like DOE would run, what chapter seventy numbers would be, DOAR would do that for the, for the town. So if you want, Paul usually provides us an email with those increases. If I see it first on Friday, I'll coordinate with him, but we'll send you out something Friday afternoon.
Great.
Just telling you what that is. I honestly wouldn't know off the top of my head what we'll, what we'll get until the recommendation comes out.
All right, and then following up on the social work piece, I know that we have our new student support person in place. And, you know, I think that one of the things that we have to take a look at, because social workers have been, I think, a topic that's come up over the last several years. But I think we do have to have a better handle on what do we have and what do we need? And what we would define if we were to hire social, what would their role be?
Right.
Because I think that what they would be for us may be very different than what the general public may imagine them to be. So I don't see that, for example, I don't view them as being clinicians. I don't, I don't think that that would be, but they may be someone who could put a family in touch with somebody who could provide some type of counseling and things like that. And the reason I say that is, is because, you know, just for continuity's sake, you know, we have our vacations and summers and things like that. If you had kids who needed some type of support on an ongoing basis, you know, you'd want to have somebody in place who could provide that. So I think we need to make sure that we're, we're on the same page.
Okay.
You know, about what, what social workers would be, what they would do in a school setting.
Okay.
And so I don't know if she's, I apologize, I can't remember.
Lorraine Wilson.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I actually met with her today.
Okay.
And this is one of the things I asked her to put on her radar, just as she goes around and meets with the individual principals and department coordinators and whatnot, to just take a look at, excuse me, our current staffing model. Because, again, we haven't traditionally used social workers. Our school psychologists and our school counselors have kind of between those two roles, done a lot of social work, traditional social work type activities.
Right.
So I gave her some of the backdrop and background information. You know, asked her to take a look at what systems and staffing models that she was familiar with in her districts that she's come from, filled her in a little bit with some of my experiences and what we kind of have here in Chelmsford. And have asked her to really, you know, kind of dig deeper into that as she meets individuals with schools. I think one of the areas that, and again, how it all shakes out, I don't fully know yet at this point. But one of the roles that I see a social worker playing that I think we don't probably do now, which there's probably some need for, is obviously within the mental health community, there is a huge, the demand outweighs the resources right now. But having some individuals be able to maybe help families navigate counseling services outside of the school system. Our, against, school counselors and psychologists do a lot of groups within the school, similar to like what you'd see on a sped service delivery grid. But the families and the students need resources outside of the school system also. So someone to help them kind of navigate with that. A lot of our staff currently also say, don't go out and do home visits, which oftentimes, social workers would do. So, you know, I just kind of put that on her radar, to ask her to take a look at what we're currently offering. What if that role were introduced to the district, it would really mean, how it would fit in? Because we're not looking to totally change our service delivery model, but how it would actually integrate and not have people kind of stepping on each other's toes or duplication of services to really have it be maximized. So she is, she is taking one.
Okay. And the other thing is, I'm not sure I really have a good handle on, like, what percentage of our student population are we talking about that's, you know, in need of these types of services, or families, families and students, I should say?
I wouldn't be able to just throw up a percentage.
Yeah, so I was just kind of curious, because, I mean, I think this is one of the things, I mean, we talk about this, but we don't really...
Right.
I'm not sure that there's, I mean, I don't know how, what kind of data we have that we would base it, this decision.
Right, see, the difficult piece to quantify is like, so we know on children's IEPs exactly how much of the service delivery grid, again, had, say, psychologist time, school counselor time, things like that. But a lot of our psychologists and school counselors are also seeing non-special ed students who might just be in a crisis. Now, they might be going through the process, they might just be a regular ed, general ed student that needs additional supports. That's what's difficult to quantify without, you know, actually going to talk to each of the counselors and having them kind of figure out their caseload, what time is it being used for, things along those lines. I could tell you based on the sped numbers, you know, what percentage of staff time is tied to, say, supporting different social groups and lunch groups and things like that. But I don't have that data for the non-special ed students.
So I just, you know, as I said, I think we've identified that it is...
Right.
The number's increasing. And I, and I think that in addition to defining what those roles should be, I think we have to define, you know, whether or not we have enough.
No, I agree, and I think the other thing is too, because I do think we've provided some very good interventions, we're probably also stopping things before they become a crisis with some students. And again, that's sometimes difficult to quantify, but we will look at that for you.
And then the other thing I wanted to bring up with regards to the budget is the librarian, because that's come up for several years now at Chelmsford High School. And we had someone in place that, you know, provided a certain set of services. You know, where are those services being provided now? And with the implementation possibly of the one-to-one learning, you know, is it necessary? Is that something we should be taking a look at again? And if we aren't, why?
Can you elaborate on that a little bit as far as how it ties into the one-on-one?
Just in terms of the type of research that kids would do, the type of thinking that they would, I think this is something that librarians really assist with. You know, in helping kids to be able to navigate, you know, all of the information out there and helping them to be able to be objective in their thinking, I'm just going by my experience with the person that I work with. But they, they really help them, as I said, navigate all of the different pieces of, yes, I know, I was thinking that right there. I could feel her right behind me, so, you know, yeah.
Were there more in the picture?
Not that I'm aware of, not at the high school level. And the, and the L, two middle schools have a high school librarian, high school, I mean, two middle schools have a librarian, middle school. And then the high school has their high school librarian, and then the elementary schools have their librarian, you know, support that they have for, at the, for one of their specialists. So you're looking for more, there was no more librarians.
I think she means replacing the coordinator position that used to be there at one point.
Do we need, do we need a cer...
Or do we need something like that?
We have a certified high school librarian.
Okay.
Two certified middle school librarians.
Yes.
Your elementary don't have to have the certification, but I do know out of the top of my head that one of them holds a certification as a certified librarian, so you do have to hold that certification.
For some reason, I thought that we had not replaced the certified librarian.
Yeah, you have, yeah, you have a dedicated high school librarian.
Who's certified?
Who's certified.
I thought he was working under someone else's certification.
Has a, no, he's a certified.
The issue was that there are two different kinds of certifications. It's a state certification, and there's a library association, am I correct in that?
Well, we all have to be certified by the state.
I know that, but I thought that was...
You can speak to the differences of the certification from the former director and the current.
I don't think we can talk about personnel right now, I don't think that that's appropriate. Nor, I feel like Sharon's being put in a position to, to speak about personnel. I just don't think we can compare personnel people at this point, I just don't think that's a good idea.
Everyone, I mean, the state, we all have to be certified.
We have to hold the state certification.
I'm still certified here in Massachusetts, in case you want me back. Yeah, everyone has to be certified. And some of the certifications are temporary while people are working on their degrees or, you know, advancing. And then after a three-year period or whatever, they move forward with it.
Yeah, you have to, you can start off with an initial, that's for most of our certifications, you can start off with an initial. After three years, you can move to a professional license.
Right, and then after that, it's every five years to be certified.
Okay, my apologies, for some reason, one of this came up last year, I didn't think that we had taken the steps to put someone in place for that, so.
And I don't feel like we are speaking to people, we are speaking to positions. And there was a director of library services who had a certain certification. And when she was moved out, another employee took a position that wasn't that position.
That's the position I'm referring to.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
We don't have, in the CAA bargaining unit anymore, a director of library services or whatever that title was. Department Coordinator for Libraries. We have a, in the teachers bargaining unit, we have a school librarian.
Okay.
Similar to the school librarians we have at the two middle schools. There is no overarching coordinator of library anymore.
Is that something that we should have, is that something we should consider?
It's always fall, it's always fallen under the director of technology.
Okay.
Even the librarian department coordinator position, so it's still within that same department, nothing there has changed.
Okay.
It would fill into, it would fall into Bill's department.
Okay.
Big Bill night tonight.
As I said, as...
Big Bill night tonight.
It is a big Bill night.
As I said, it's something that's come up for the last few years.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were taking a look at that and, you know, just had all the information that we needed in order to be able to decide whether or not that was something that we should include. just had all the information that we needed in order to be able to decide whether or not that was something that we should include in the budget or if it was not necessary at this time.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else in terms of budget?
Good question. Do we know how the federal shutdown is affecting any of our families? And are we providing information for those families who may be cut off from rent money or food or?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, no and no. I haven't heard anything though. Usually that would start at the school level where the principals would know that, because they know their families a little bit better than perhaps Jay and myself. And they have, nobody has said anything at this point.
I don't know about military families that might be impacted.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything. Sometimes it's hard because people are proud and they don't want to say something. It's more of digging in, but that's something we could ask our principals and administrators, just keep an eye out for.
Be sensitive to it.
Someone is working in a certain field, perhaps, you know, in passing, have some conversations.
Yeah, I mean, this could happen to anybody, right?
Yes.
Right, it is.
And maybe it's worth including in the newsletter periodically. If you are in need of services, please feel free to reach out to.
That's a good point.
You know, that was, that was it.
Yep, I'd call, yeah, call me. I'll reach out, help them. No, no, I think that's a, it's a fine idea because you start, usually you start to see that with the kids. They don't have a lunch. They don't have something. They couldn't go on a field trip. And I have not heard of that yet, but we should probably just put a little eye on that.
One other thing, we've, I've gotten a couple of emails, I'm sure you have about, somebody's asked about sign language is a foreign language. That's a possibility, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, so there's a miscommunication. I have got back to those parents. So originally, when we collapsed one of the world languages, our idea was to bring in another world language. I was toying around with the idea of ASL. There was just a miscommunication that there was actually an FTE available in the world language department, which there was not. That was just a mistake and that's being rectified at the high school level with the students and the school administration. So it is not in the program of studies. If we do move forward and decide to put in an FTE for world languages for that, that would be the direction that we would like to go in. I think it would just be something new, something fresh, something different. So we do have our French and our Spanish, but we're also offering the additional languages after a student has met their graduation requirement for languages to take the online courses as well. So that would give them Chinese, the higher studies of French and Spanish, if they want to go above and beyond what they had, that would also give them Latin and there's one other that's, oh, German. There's one other two that's eluding me right now. So they'll have other, we have more world language offerings than what we even had before, but I would like to go in that direction, but that's just not, that was just a miscommunication.
Somebody has expressed an interest in providing it at the elementary level, so I was going to talk to the wellness committee as they take a look at some of their elementary after-school enrichment activities and that maybe something like that could be included as part of that.
I think the hard part with the elementary or even the middle school schedule at this point is trying to find additional time within the schedule for like new offerings without taking something away. But as an enrichment or an after-school type program, if the interest is there, certainly we could support it.
And I can tell you that I was always thinking, my gosh, you have to do these languages so much earlier to get them. And when I go around to talk to the different countries that I've been visiting, mostly, I mean, they're all fluent in multiple languages. The question comes up too is when did they start? Most of them start in fifth grade. So that was, that was surprising to me. One thing I do question, is it more like conversational language rather than getting deep into the languages? And that will kind of be the next thing I'll dig into. But if we did eventually go in a world language piece rather than seventh grade, maybe fifth grade could be a good start.
All right, any other budget items? So next meeting, you'll, you presenting the budget?
If all goes well.
If all goes well. Any public comment in that at the time?
Well, because it's not an agenda item.
Yeah.
People could come and speak on it. We posted it specifically for these two meetings to just get general feedback before we even recommended a budget. But no, they could certainly provide public comment on the recommended budget.
At the beginning of the meeting.
At the beginning of the meeting because it's a line item, they won't actually see the budget recommendation until that evening. But then they certainly can come back again for the budget deliberation the Tuesday after February vacation. And we're still open to, you know, calls or emails and anything people have.
I won't be able to attend that meeting.
Let me think of you.
Okay, no field trips, I see?
No, I'm sorry. We put that place all the wrong, thinking one was going to come in and it didn't. So no action this evening on field trips and conferences.
Any liaison reports?
CPAC had a great workshop last Thursday, I think it was, on, they had someone in from the organization to be able to help parents understand, kind of navigate the process of the IEP, understand what each section meant. And it was, it was a very good, very good workshop. So it was nice that they're offering these types of, you know, opportunities for parents. It was at the library.
Was it attendant?
I want to see, there's about ten people there.
John?
I did attend the BSA meeting last week and they have a pile of events coming up. So I'm going to actually compile a list for the next meeting and go through them all. But they have a lot of just good activity. They had a lot of really good questions about what's been going on in the committee, so.
I went to council schools along with superintendent. So council schools, I know Maria Santos came, last meeting spoke a little bit about the kind of the PTO with the PTOs and all the PTO offices get together and they, you know, they talk about the activities going on at different schools, the fundraisers and enrichment programs. So it's great to hear all the different things going on. In addition to that, they're sort of in charge of the pictures, school pictures. And a lot of the enrichment funding comes from the school pictures. And then that's all kind of orchestrated through that particular group. And the other event I went, ended up going to is the Valley Collaborative had their stakeholders meeting where they kind of go over their financial position and their programming. And so it's kind of good to see, you know, what they're doing and, you know, all the new additions they have and seeing where they are at financially. And they seem to be in a pretty good shape at this point, which is good news for us, you know.
Yeah, the only thing that we don't know, they are in very good shape. This is the first year that we've actually increased tuitions for even our member districts, non-member districts. I forget if it's been seven or eight years since they've got to do that. It's certainly, it's a shift and an adjustment. I don't fully know what that is going to mean for the return that we've been traditionally getting from Valley. Because if they're actually increasing their tuitions, obviously their operating costs are going up. So I'll probably be a little more conservative with Joanna this year as far as a recommendation about how much we potentially, if anything, should budget for a get back from Valley for next year. But, you know, they're certainly in sound financial shape. And I think the last couple of years, we've received almost half a million dollars in the return. It's been great to be able to kind of buffer our circuit breaker account in the end to have a set aside for sped tuition. We knew it was something that we couldn't count on forever as a revenue source, which was wise for us not to fully embed that into our budget. But we'll probably be a little bit more conservative next year just to not get in a situation where we're overestimating revenues to support the local operating budget for fiscal twenty. But they're in good shape. They run great programming. Our students who are over there are getting a great education and it's, it's good to see the, it's a cohesive board. It's a cohesive group at Valley. And it's good to, good to be a member district.
All right, any new items? Couple, I just want to thank the superintendent for getting the school committee handbook online. So now that's under school committee.
Yep, well, just while we're still waiting for the MASC official one, but yes, the.
No, but the handbook that we approved.
Oh, I put that online.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think you're not there. So that's up there now if anybody wants to just take a look at that.
Thank you, Jay.
I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Just say you're welcome.
And also, I know Barbara brought up the, in the spring, we had voted as a committee to support the foundation budget review commission. She noticed that we weren't on the list and followed up with the right people and it looks like we're on the list now.
Yeah, you're on the list now. I don't know what happened on the, that transaction. Debbie actually hunted them down to get us on. So we are on the list now online.
And the last thing, just want to remind everybody that next Tuesday, we are going to have our public forum at the police training room, in the police training room, seven o'clock, on alternative scheduling, whatever they call it, whatever they called it. So I welcome everybody to come to that. And we'll be discussing a couple of different things that are out there and hopefully we'll get good turnout.
Mentioned the police training room. Last Thursday night I was there. Republican Town Committee had a session where different people who are currently involved, like Board of Health and School Committee and so forth, to speak about what's required on those different committees. And so I was there to speak with the school committee. They had contacted Anderson and explained to him what happened. And it went very well, but it was really well timed because with the handbook of the school committee online, that's all I really had to tell them. So I just wanted to mention that that was put out so if people are looking at running, they have some idea.
All right, anything else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you.